Okay. Call this meeting of the Rockport Select Board from Monday, July 13th to order. If you have cellphones, I'd appreciate it if you would mute them or, and if you have to take a call or say, go, please go all the way outside because if you're out here in the hallway, we really hear it. So, and we don't need to be part of your conversations. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from Monday, May 11th, meeting of the Select Board. They were presented to us last month, but we tabled them since we hadn't had time to really review them. We have them in front of us. Owen was not member of the Select Board at that time, so he will be abstaining. So, do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And second it. Do we have any changes that need to be made, errors, omissions?
A couple of things that didn't make sense to me, but since Linda is not here, I don't know. I don't know what they mean. On page two, it's under what I said. And I'm not sure what that sentence is supposed to mean.
Which one?
Which one?
The very bottom.
Oh, we should ask for public comment?
Yes. The next sentence, I'm, "There are feelings, no library dash sal." I don't know exactly what that's supposed to mean.
Okay.
So, I don't want it attributed to me since I don't know what it means.
The last three words, I would agree, I don't remember, but I do remember you saying that there were people.
Oh, I agree with that. I just, the whole sentence doesn't make sense because I don't know what the end of it means.
Yeah, I don't know.
We can't strike the last three words if you want to. I just don't know what it means.
Okay.
So, we can strike the last three minutes, three words. We can end at feelings.
Okay. So, we will strike that. Another?
Page nine.
Oh, boy.
"The Planning Board Meets at Budget Time and Has Not Met Since Then." I don't know what that means either.
Oh, wait, budget? The budget or planning?
The plan, oh, "The Planning Board Meets at Budget Time and Has Not Met Since Then."
I think it was meant to say met at budget time.
Well, they've definitely met since budget time.
But had they on May 11th?
I don't remember if they had a April meeting or not. But I'm not quite sure what budget has to do with Planning Board.
I think it was a liaison report.
Yes, it is.
Right, right.
You were saying in some way that they hadn't met since the last time, hadn't met recently, I think.
Okay.
I'm guessing that's what the comment was.
Putting them on the warrants and everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. If that's what it means to the rest of you, I'll roll with that because I'm just like...
Ken, you implied you had some...
Yeah, I had a correction on the first, actually the very bottom of the first page going to the second page where the vote was five, four, zero opposed, but one abstained. It should be four.
Four, four.
And then there was one other. If I can find my red pencil mark here, I think. Maybe not. Note cut.
Okay. Any other questions we need to make? Hearing none, call for approval as amended. On favor? And abstain? It is a vote. The next item was the minutes from Monday, June 22nd. We do not have those, so we, I'll take a motion to table.
Move to table.
And I'm going to say at this point that with Linda unavailable, we may not have them for August either, so we're not going to put a date definite on this if there's no objection. Okay. All in favor of tabling? Opposed? It's a vote. Some announcements. The next regular meeting of the Select Board will be Monday, August 10th, 7:00 PM here at the Opera House, be televised and streamed. Some announcements. All of the announcements are in the agenda for tonight. I only have a few to take that I want to point out. First of all, there's a leaning and cleaning workshop scheduled for Saturday, August 29th. You need to see the town office to sign up. I do have an announcement. On Saturday, August 29th, the Maine Old Cemetery Association will lead an all-day cleaning and leaning workshop at the Glencoe Cemetery on Warrenton Street. The workshop is open to the public with a limit of 20 participants. Registration is required and the fee is $20. Registration forms will be available later this week at the town office during regular business hours. They will also be available soon to be downloaded from the Maine Old Cemetery Association website. The workshop will show how to properly and safely clean gravestones and how to reset tablet markers without a base which are leaning. A lean of more than 15 degrees is potentially a danger to itself, nearby stones, and to visitors. However, a gravestone which is cracked or had previous repair is not a candidate for resetting. A list of specific gravestones which have been chosen for resetting will be made available to the public before the workshop. Gravestones bearing the surnames of Jones, Jamison, Burns, and Balcom, and I'll spell that, B-A-L-C-O-M, are on the list. By law, an attempt must be made to gain admission, permission from the descendants to do the work. The town, as owner of the cemetery, has already authorized the work. Further announcements. The Library Committee is having a meeting on Wednesday, August 12th. That would be their normal meeting, however, they're going to turn it into a workshop where they will have the meeting to approve their warrant payment to the town of expenses, and then they will go into a workshop to deal with the two reports that have been received recently. I also point out, this is a non-traditional date. Normally, they have been meeting on the third Monday. September is also going to be a non-traditional date. So, stay tuned for that. Upcoming workshops. The Select Board will be holding a workshop on Monday, August 17th, at the town office to discuss the fiber optic project here in town. We have a 125th anniversary planning workshop, and I'm not going to read the name for what it means, 125th all spelled out. It does exist, believe me. But there is the planning workshop on Tuesday, August 25th, 6:00 PM, at the town office. Public is really encouraged to come and participate. We are looking for a large enthusiastic group of Rockport citizens celebrating our 125th separation from that nasty town to the north of us. Good thing they don't get our transmissions on the internet.
It's live streaming now.
Oh, no!
I was just going to say.
Okay. All levity aside, I have spoken to the Chair of the Camden Select Board. I've spoken to the Chair of the Camden Select Board, and he's all in favor of us holding a snowball fight on, I believe it's February 25th, over by the arch.
It's us.
Okay. The future of the Rockport Public Library, as I already mentioned, the, there's going to be a workshop with the Library Committee and the Select Board on Thursday, September 10th, 5:00 PM, over at the town office. That is a joint meeting, as I said, our workshop. We will hold a cemetery workshop on Monday, September 21st, 5:00 PM, in the town office. This is a joint workshop with the cemetery committee. And then, looking far into the future, we will hold our pre-budget workshop on Wednesday, October 21st, 5:30 PM, here at the Opera House, and we will be televising and streaming that. Moving ahead, some committee openings. All of them are listed in the agenda for this evening, but particularly, I want to point out that we have two vacancies on the zoning board of appeals, and we really need to have people on that board. They don't meet often, but when they do meet, it is critical to the town that we have a full complement available. Agenda changes. Do we have any agenda changes that we need to make tonight? Hearing none, move forward. Public comment. Public comments should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission from the board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. Do we have anyone who wishes to make public comment this evening on items not under the agenda? Hearing none? All right. Town manager, this is your time.
Great. Everybody's waiting for this. First, I'd like to recognize the efforts of a very small group of people that volunteered in the Keep America Beautiful group. If you can stand up and...
One term of honor.
I just wanted to, can you guys come up here so you can get seen?
Yeah.
I mean, the way this all started, Maggie came into my office. Maggie, raise your hand. Maggie Christie.
Come on, come right on up.
Came in, called, came into my office and said she wanted to do something. She thought our streets needed to be cleaned up. We had too much litter. I didn't agree with her. I thought, first mistake. I didn't think we'd had a lot of litter on our streets, and she was very insistent and said, yes, we do. She cleans up three bags of trash a week on her, she'd been doing it for quite some time. And then, when Mike and I were doing some, our morning driving Miss Daisy drive-arounds, we really identified that there were a lot of streets where we have traffic that goes from one area to another, the cut-through streets, we call them, that we were getting, there was trash on some of those streets. The streets that are generally neighborhood streets, they weren't problems. It was these South Street, all the streets that were cut-through areas. And so, I suggested to Maggie, well, you can help us. And help us, she did. So, she took matters into her own hands, put together a group of people that were, that met pretty much regularly for about two months, organized, set this whole thing up, and it's, I think it's one of the first in some ventures that they're working on. And, and they actually collected 528 pounds of litter on the road. So, she was right. I was wrong. She was right. I was wrong. And so, they ended up with volunteers from Penn Bay Hospital, cleaned Old County Road and part of South Street, and they were so vigorous in their cleaning that they didn't stop at the Rockport Town Line. They kept going, almost all the way to Rockland, all the way to Route 17. VSTV cleaned the left side of Meadow Street from Route 90 to Park Street. Main Stone and Landscaping cleaned from Meadow Street to Route 90 and to Park, from Route 90 to Park Street. Coastal Mountain Land Trust cleaned from South Street, from Beech Hill to Meadow Street, and cleaning from Beech Hill. The Harley Company cleaned Beech Hill Road and half of Potter Street, I believe.
Porter.
Yep, Porter Street. Farley and Son cleaned all of Russell Ave. Adventure Advertising, they stepped in and helped by donating some T-shirts to help get people motivating, and they gave us a really good deal on getting the road cleanup crew signs. Did it in a really, you know, overnight for us. Home Depot gave us huge discounts on supplies that we needed. EBS cleaned the roads around their location. Camden Haniford, they even looked at Camden Haniford and said, just outside of Camden Haniford on Route 1 gets messy with bags and things. So, they are a force to be reckoned with. When they say they can get something done, they, they did it. It was an amazing, good job, everyone.
Thank you.
And I have to say, there were a lot of kids out there, too. When I say kids, I mean, you know, younger folks.
It's a good lesson for them to learn.
And they talked about it, so that was good.
A good lesson for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, moving on. The Library Book Sale. I haven't heard the exact totals yet. I don't know if they've, if they've got numbers yet. Do they?
We are pretty sure we took in 14,000 books. What I don't know is the tally of our expenses, so I can't give you a nips.
Okay.
It was a very successful study.
But in all, this, the effort takes a lot of people and just does a lot, there's a lot of work on many people's parts, starting with the Friends of the Library. They had over 25,000 books. Midcoast Recreation provides the space, the space for the books. The location that was, where they sort books all year is supplied by Rockport Steel, and about 20, the 25,000 books are loaded on trucks and moved to the MRC by the Public Works Department. So...
Who also set up tables.
Yeah, right.
And move tables. A lot of tables.
So, this, I mean, it's a big event, but a lot of people attended, and it's very popular. Our book sale is a very popular event, and so, thank you very much to all of the people who put in all of that work. Some of the projects that we have going on, Bill, you were specifically asked about. The Opera House bid came in under what we budgeted, which is good news. We budgeted $350,000. The Lumpson bid price was $217,110, but then, when you add in all of the other stuff there, you know, for windows and replacing the gutters and the fascia board and the, what's the other thing, the?
Sofit?
The sofas, yes. When you start replacing all that stuff, the total will run about $269,000, which is still under our budget, so it does give us enough money to, the hope is to be able to get the heating and air conditioning system all upgraded and worked on because you remember we've had some problems with that system over the past year. You have in your package a spreadsheet. One of the things is that unless there's some overwhelming objection tonight, when you go out, if you get to me, one of the things we have to do to preserve the Opera House, the work we're doing to make it easier for us to do it, and preserve the work we do so it does, the Opera House doesn't get continual damage, is to remove some of the trees that are close to the building. And you've noticed that the lilac trees are gone from the side of the building. The hope is that we'll get some advice from the Parks Committee on what kind of plantings to make there, that we can plant something to replace them that will work and not be a detriment to the side of the building. We also had to remove a pine tree from out front, a small pine from out front, and the hope is that we'll be able to, once the work is done, we'll have some money to replace the plantings. There's one birch tree out here that is leaning, and it's leaning right towards the building. And then, there are four pine trees that really don't belong there. They're tall, spindly things, and we're, the plan is, unless you guys jump up and down and yell and scream and holler at me, the plan is that those, those trees will all come down, too, at the same time when, when the tree guy is here. It just makes sense to get it all done. So...
What about the trees behind the building?
Oh, those are going to get cleared out as well, so that we can get the staging up because a lot of that, that's going to be all pipe staged in the back, correct?
Yeah, there was a bunch of smaller trees that we cleaned back.
The bigger trees may or may not, is what we decide. We'll have to talk to, maybe talk to Mike.
And we've met with the, with our neighbor here, and he is looking forward to getting his side of the building looking good. So, because it does, his side of the building does look a little, very shabby. It looks worse than this side of the building. So, he's very eager to get that done, and has been very, very cooperative about, you know, helping us get that, making that happen. So, other projects, the Mill Street Bridge project, as we've talked about, that one is underway. The preliminary engineering has been completed, and the geo, geotech work will be done next, next, was done last month. The survey will be done by the end of this month, and then, the final design will be done by October 1st. Bids are expected to be out by March 1st with construction.
That's a nice spelling.
Yeah.
Creative.
Creative spelling. I'm surprised my spell check didn't get it. But the, the construction season will be in, next, the summer of 2016, during low flow in 2016. School Street is also underway. The geotech and survey have been completed. The final design will be ready August 21st, with the bids going out by the 25th, and there's construction to begin September 21st with the completion a month later. The Summer Street, the geotech is underway and survey has been completed, but there was some conversation, and I'm not sure we've completed that circle with main water, whether they were going to be ready to do any work on the water system down Summer Street while we had the road torn up. So, I, I'm not sure that we've confirmed that. I think they were going to get back to us. They, they said that they would like to get that, make improvements to the water system while we had the road opened up, so...
But they didn't have any desire on School Street?
No, I think that, that work was done just in the past eight years or something.
There is some stuff they may want to do, but they're open to bidding.
Street, when we bid now.
Right. Can you clarify something? What is geotech? It's road, you know, it's borings, and they do test borings to see what's down there.
So, it's not a company, it's a term that reflects doing specific activities?
Yeah, it's, they have one specific company out of Rockland, I believe they come from, that do those borings and analyze what's under it.
And they're called geotech?
The, the work that they do is geotech work. It's just a, it's a trade term. I don't think the name of the company's geotech. It's a subcontractor of Gartley and Dorski's. And basically, they, they drill down to see what's underneath there. So, when we do the work, the reconstruction work, there's limited surprises. I mean, there's always going to be surprises, but we don't know exactly what's under it.
We do core samples.
Yes, basically. The High Sidewalk, the High Sidewalk is probably one of the more challenging projects we have because it's, it's so visible, and it's right in the center of town, and it's not going to be an easy, it's not going to be an easy project because it does have, it's a, it's very visible, and, you know, we don't want it to, maybe I shouldn't, we shouldn't, we don't want it to look like the New York thruway when we're done.
Oh, you moved north. It used to be the New Jersey thruway.
New Jersey, okay, yeah. So, what we're hoping to do is that they've done the survey, and we're hoping to do, get some preliminary design work done by the end of August, and then, have some public conversations about what's the next step and what it should look like, and how much money we want to spend on this because there's a lot of different options. Mike and I have talked about this with Will and Bill Lane. There's a lot of different options that will look different, you know, from recreating another whole granite structure, which would be really expensive, but, you know, it depends on what we're, what we have for money and what we're willing to pay for. But the, the goal is to get that, that done, that would be, the target is to get that designed, everybody to agree, and then, start that first thing in the spring so that the work is done before the heavy traffic season because that's going to disrupt, that's going to be a huge disruption on that corner.
When we have that meeting, we should reach out specifically to the Conservation Committee and to the Parks Committee where it's not a formal part of their input, but it has a coherency to, you know, to the rest of what the town looks like.
Yeah, I'm, I don't think, you know, it shouldn't be based on what I think is, looks good because my taste may be totally different than everybody else's, and, but, you know, the hope is that we'll get, and I'm sure we will get public comments because it is so visible. And it will make a, it's going to change the way that area looks. There's no doubt about it. It will change the way that area looks. So, Mount Pleasant Street, we're in the process now. Mike and Bill Lane are working on the areas of the road. I don't think they've started their geotech up there yet, have they?
Not right now.
But the goal is to get that, that will get done this summer. The work that Mike did last winter, last fall, winter, that held up very well. We, we've already started, we had the ditch lines along that side. As you, first going up the hill, that was all ramhoed out, and we create, actually created a ditch line so that the water running down the slope across the granite face now has a place to go rather than continuing to follow the granite under the dirt we've put there, which causes the problem. So, now, there's a ditch line that will direct the water down to another, another culvert, and then, under the road where it should be, where the culvert is.
Okay.
The West Rockport Fire Station, one of the challenges there is the preliminary design has been completed, but we're negotiating or trying to work on, we have to do a land acquisition there, and that has not been completed yet. The fire department is working on that. As, as you know, the owner of that passed away in the middle of that discussion, and so, we're, you know, delicately working through that. The Public Works Roof, as we get down to the end, the Public Works Roof is further down the list of priorities, and there's a big span in the price that we can do that roof from. There's a span of maybe $70,000 or $80,000 in cost, and so, as we work our way through the projects, we'll, the plan is to leave that one towards the end, and, and we may have enough money to do exactly what we want, or we may have enough, not have enough money, and we may decide that we're going to do an alternative to protect that roof.
So, not to expect this one until next year?
Yeah, that one's definitely not next, until next year. So, that, that's the plan on all those projects, and you have this, this spreadsheet from Gartley and Dorski in your, in my report. The Fiber Optic Tilson Study, last week, I don't know how many people in the room here were part of the random, there was a random survey of 400 residents that that took place, I think went out two weeks ago.
Out of curiosity, are there, are there any random people here?
Yes.
Oh, good. So, 400 random people, survey, and the expectation is that about a 10% return rate, it would be really good. But we also have the, we also have, we had them set up a self-selected survey, which is www.surveymonkey.com backslash, it's too much to remember. It'll be on the website, that you can go there. It's been in the press, so you can go there and take the random survey. Tomorrow, I will be sending out a blanket email. I hate doing these things, but a blanket email to everybody that I can identify on my, my address list and the business list that we have, encouraging them to go and take that survey, take part in this survey.
You'll include the press? The press?
The press has already been notified.
The media?
They've already been notified. It's been in the paper, but I'm not sure if people, if people notice it. I do know that several people have linked it on their Facebook pages, so that's starting to circulate around on Facebook so that people will, encouraging people to go and, and go to the link and take the test. One of the things that we're, my email that's going to go out is it, it provides a link to do a speed test, and the next step that we're asking people to do if you're, if you've got your geek on, is to go out and do a speed test at your house and send it in and tell us what you're, what you're getting for speed, and we'll create a map, a data map, and be able to start to say, here's what the speeds are here. Here's the service providers in this area, and here's the speeds that they're actually able to provide.
So, is that already set up?
The survey is.
The survey is, but the speed test situation?
The speed test situation is not, you mean, putting it on a digital file, you mean?
Well, no. How do you want people to respond with that information?
Oh, yes, that's set up, and I believe the email address to send it back to is rockportsurvey@town.rockport.me.us. I'm not sure if they've clicked, that's the address that they're going to use. I'm not sure if that has gotten done as of today. That's why I didn't send it out.
Oh, okay, because I know it's not on the survey.
No, it's not on the survey. Nope. It's definitely not on the survey.
And if your speeds are lower than what you're paying for, tell your service provider.
And just as a little bit of encouragement, on the bottom of the email that I'm sending out is a screenshot of my speed test, so you can say, wait a minute, I'm getting three, and, you know, Rick is getting 850.
And Rick is going, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I could have that at my house. Is that what you're getting, Rick?
800, yep.
Yep, yep. So, so that, you know, that will be important people for people, an important thing for people to do. And the more people that we get to take part, and the more results we get, the more coverage we'll get, we'll be able to say, this is how many people participated in the survey, and this is how important it is to them. The revale is complete, and you'll see in my notes here, we lost $41 million in value, much of it on the oceanfront land and upper-end housing. We kind of, we sort of expected that. That, what that will mean, and a, we've done a lot of, there's been a lot of anguish in the office over this, and Kerry has put a lot of time into this. We can expect an 83, the worst-case scenario is an 83 cent increase in the mill rate to That, that rate may go down because it does not include personal property tax and other increases that we may see that he can't predict. That he can't predict at this point. So he, his prediction is based on what he, the facts he actually knows today. So there's a bunch of other statistics here. Uh, do you want me to go through them all or? We have a, we have, uh, six thousand two hundred and twelve real estate accounts. Eighty-two percent of them will see a decrease in their property valuation. One percent will see no change and seventeen percent will see a valuation increase. Using the mill rate of eight, uh, thirteen eighty-two, four thousand, uh, four hundred and seventy-two taxpayers will, will pay less property taxes in two thousand sixteen. Nine will see no change of the remaining one hun- one thousand seven hundred and thirty-one, four hundred and eighty-five ta- taxpayers, eight percent will see an increase of less than a hundred dollars. Three hundred and sixty-seven taxpayers will see an increase of, uh, greater than a hundred dollars in their total tax bill, about less than two hundred tax, uh, dollars. And eight hundred and seventy-seven taxpayers, fourteen percent will see an increase, increases of two hundred dollars or more.
That's all preliminary, yeah.
Yes, right.
When, when will, uh, taxpayers be able to find out that information before?
That information is going, the, 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 uh, those notices will go out to taxpayers on Wednesday of, of this week, I believe it is. People will give a phone number and email address to respond to and the hearing dates are being set up in the Richardson Room the last week of July. So if people have comments, concerns, questions, they can either do it by email, which many people may choose to do. Or they can set up an appointment, come in and ask questions. Um, so, um. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a tough process, but we sort of expected it, this, this, um, that this is the way it was going to go. We, Kerry put in a lot of time and a lot of effort with KRT to, to make sure we had the numbers right. You know, it's been a lot of work on his part and he is, he's taking it very seriously. As a matter of fact, he's, he's one of the ones in the, the higher end. It's going to be paying the two hundred and, more than two hundred dollars, uh, tax increase and his, on his property tax.
But we have to give him credit. He did save us a lot of money in the, in the method here, so.
Right. It could have been two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it cost us, what, forty something?
Something like that.
Forty thousand dollars. Um, uh, some of the people that he's heard from already that have called and asked, um. Obviously, the waterfront people or people who've been overvalued are happy with the reduction. Because they have, they have a lot of concerns about what they've been paying, so. In other small little pieces of information, we hired two part Marine Park attendants for the harbor. Eliza Maisy and Lucas Boch.
Boch.
Okay, good, thank you. We hired a temporary labor at Public Works, Kenneth Wright, um, who comes to us from the Vermont Forest Service. Vermont Forest Service. Uh, the new fire truck was put into service, just put into service, not actually gone to a call. I don't think it's been to a call yet. Uh, on Sun- on Sunday night, it's all set up and good to go. So that's, uh, everybody's, the, the key people have been trained and they're ready to go on that. And, uh, the old truck is out of the building and the new truck is in. So the piling project at the harbor is completed. But not without a variety of major problems, but, uh, I'm not going to go into all of those details, but I think we're, I think we're done. We've created a bunch of new space and then additionally, you, Mike, you're still building another float, correct? Yes, for the, for the, um.
Recreational side.
For the recreational side. Uh, there was, it was a little bit of angst for the fishermen. I, I think all things, things considered, they did really well. Trying to modify and adjust their work schedule because it affected them for close to a week, I think, right? Close, closer to two weeks. Um, so.
Some of them weren't happy.
Yeah, no, I'm sure they're not.
Boy, were they making use of those floats today.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it does improve the float, the problem is whenever you make improvement like that, it does. It, it take, you know, it is going to be inconvenient to make that improvement. So it does, it does create, we created more space for them. And it, it makes it easier for them to access.
In the long run, we actually have a lot more space than we were even anticipating.
Right.
It actually, you know, and all that, um, we actually have more space there.
Exactly, yeah. So it's, it's act, it's, it's very good for them. Um, you know, it's, it's hard when you can't get, you, you're having to haul your, your gear and everything over to a different float. And it's just, it's not set up right for you and the boats are trying to come and go and, and you had that, I mean, it wasn't like it was a small little barge. Yeah, it was the biggest barge they could possibly get in there. Um, and finally, I spoke at the Telecom Association of Maine, the TAM, uh, meeting at the. Uh, Sama said it was a little like being in the lion's den, um, about the importance of broadband. And then I also spoke at the Maine Broadband Workshop in Portland, uh, last week, which went very well. There were attendees from Matawa- as far away as Madawaska. So, that's my story.
Any questions for the town manager? It was a good thing that the lobster season's a little late this year.
Yeah, right. Yeah. We do work really hard to make them, to, to keep the fishing, uh, fishing people happy here because we want them to stick around.
Okay, unfinished business. Uh, let's move ahead. Um, the one item we still have going here is the report from the town manager on the, moving the Glencoe Memorial. A Veterans Memorial to the rest area. Um, this was a request made back in May and I think you got an update here for us.
Yeah, one of the requests was at the last meeting was to publicize it in the newspaper and we had some good, uh, stories that were, uh, put in the paper. And, and we did have some comments, but they were comments, not, they weren't comments from anybody that really had any standing to say, you know, I was part of that group and it was set up for this. It was, you know, some people that just thought, why move it? Um, you know, there was just mostly those kind of people, but it wasn't an overweight. I think we only had like three or four calls, but we were hoping, you know, we wanted to make sure that we didn't find somebody that said, no, I was part of that group. We voted on this, this was a decision, this is this, and, and we didn't get any of that. So, as, as, you know, all, all of that said. Owen has put together a plan for how to get it moved down there. Uh, it will mean having, uh, Mike and his crew dig the hole and form it up and get the concrete pad. Built and I really like your idea. If, if we target it for getting it done and have a rededication, that in itself will probably bring more attention to it than anything. By doing a big rededication ceremony will, you know.
On Veterans Day.
On Veterans Day. That will make people realize that it's actually there.
And do we end up choosing a location near the entrance to the rest area?
That, I think that's the discussion you were talking about was, when you look down the hill, you can see there's a sign right there. I, is, I'm not sure what the sign says now. Is it a? Yeah.
There's a, there's a poster, that flag is painted blue.
Clear and there's a, so, you know, you won't be able to miss it.
Good.
And then briefly, if I may, though JJ is here and he can speak for himself, I stopped by and talked to him again. Anything that's below the base pedestal stone, he says will be his responsibility and also there is a flag pole.
Yes.
So anything that we find after removing the monument, from what he said, he would, he would take care of that and that wouldn't be a town responsibility.
So the flag pole goes with it?
Yeah, and you're welcome to have the other, right, too, if you like, because. I need a little bit more visibility.
All right. Good, I'm glad to hear this coming together.
Yes, yes. As far as, as far as I'm concerned, we're good to go, um, and can start that process if, if you guys vote to do that.
Well, I will move to approve the Glencoe Veterans, move to approve moving the Glencoe Veterans Memorial to the Glencoe Rest Area.
Second.
Moved and seconded, yes. There's a couple of words missing there in our motion, this motion. Um, any further discussion? Nope.
And I, I would add that the, uh, the Veterans Day dedication is a great idea. I think it'll, it'll draw some attention to it and, uh, perhaps. Draw some attention to people in town that we do have that park down there that can be used for picnics and whatever.
Um, hearing no further discussion. All in favor of the motion? That is approved. Very good. JJ, your help on this.
I, I have people prepared volunteers, so if there's anything we can do to help.
Okay.
Get ready now with some special Veterans Day burgers.
Red, white and blue, no. Okay.
The red one, you can have the blue one.
Okay, I'm going to move ahead here. Um, we have no public hearing this evening. Under new business, uh, we do wish to make an acknowledgement of a gift. Of fifty dollars from an anonymous donor, uh, for the benefit of the General Assistance Heating Fund. Uh, whoever the person is, we are great. Very grateful for your consideration. Um, there is no committee resignations this month. Uh, we do have an application by Warren Erickson to serve on the planning board. However, he's not here this month. And so I'm suggesting that we table this to, um, August. I've checked and apparently there are no pressing issues before the planning board. Uh, that would need his, uh, assistance prior to that. So, uh, with that, unless there's no objection, I'll entertain a motion to table to August.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
The only thing I'd like to say is that since we do plan on hearing him, the Monday before their Wednesday meeting, we should make sure that the planner is, puts together a packet for him. And that perhaps it be brought to this meeting so he can get that, so he can review it for their August meeting.
Good idea, good suggestion.
Yeah, reading through his application, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't approve him, but it is important for him to be here.
Yeah, we do, we, you know, we, we made the decision, we do want people to be present before us.
Especially for that group.
So, um, all in favor of tabling? We have tabled it. Uh, the next, uh, this is the consideration of the bylaws from the Parks Committee. And we have the Chair of the Parks Committee here with us tonight. Um, and we have received a copy of the proposed bylaws with the necessary changes. I would point out that this was the, um, they're being adopted from what used to be the Parks and Recreation Commission, or Committee. Now just to be the, um, Parks Committee. Um, do we have, uh, yes, let's start with our discussion.
I had one comment.
Dave, David, since you're the Chair, can you come on up to the podium, please? Um, since our questions probably will be directed more to you.
The only question that I had, sir, was reducing the committee membership from eight to five, right? It still says that you need to have four members to have a quorum. Is that still what you want or did you want to reduce that to three members to have a quorum now that you only have five?
I thought we did, yeah. Three would be, three out of five would be right.
And I thought that that made sense, but it, it does say four.
Yep.
Okay, I missed where that was.
Turn it over.
Backside, right at the very top.
Oh, oh, it was, it was written out, no wonder, okay.
I thought we did, so, yeah, makes sense.
What I would like to see, and I think we had, had put this in the template, is that under the purpose, we would really have, what's the purpose of the committee? Not what just the purpose of the bylaws is, but what's the mission of, of the committee?
We have a vision statement which is separate.
Okay.
And so we were depending on that as doing the job, but we could incorporate that into the bylaws if you want.
I think that's what they're going to do. Yeah, yeah. I think we're in agreement.
Yeah, even, uh, some other committees have actually, what they've done is, is actually have the title bylaws and, and then state the mission statement as the mission statement and then start again with section one, whatever, so that would be.
We're, we're meeting tomorrow, so I'm sure you can come up with that.
That would be great.
I have a couple of questions on, uh, section two, number of members. Uh, it says a member of the committee shall serve for a term of three years and may be reappointed. Is there any thought about how many times the person could be reappointed? In other words.
It's one of those committees where, um, knowledge of the horticulture of the parks and institutional memory is quite important. And I don't see any particular desirability about having turnover.
Typically, the, the term limits are set by state statute for those quasi judicial committees, um.
Right.
Planning, zoning, things like that. Um, these are purely town appointed committees and we typically don't put a ti- a, a iteration.
My, my question has to do with how it's worded. It, I just wonder if we need to make that clear that it could be reappointed multiple times or something like that. Because it's, it's sometimes you see that, you know, may serve a term of three years and may be reappointed, period.
I think we depended on the template for that wording, so I don't have a strong feeling.
Just to clarify, I mean, I, I'm perfectly in agreement with you. I think, you know, if somebody wants to serve on it for many, many years, I don't have a problem with that as long as they're doing good work. Right. Um, the other wording issue has to do with the, uh, the section on no business conducted by the committee except at a duly committed notice meeting. Or without a quorum, et cetera. That's clumsily worded. Um, I think what you really want to say is that. At a duly noticing call meeting and with a quorum of at least three members.
Okay.
Because the way it's written right now, yeah, the way it's written right now, it implies that you, if you were, you could either do it at a meeting or with a quorum. And the quorum could happen at Joe's Bar and Grill down the street or something, so I think we want to make that a little bit clearer. And, and then my only other suggestion would be, uh, in section five voting where it says no member may participate, et cetera, as defined by law. It would be nice to have a reference of the town charter in there, I think, just to say, um, especially where the, the conflict of interest is defined in the town charter. Where we could say, you know, as, as defined by the town charter or other applicable law or something like that.
Dave, do you want me to mark my copy up and give it to you at the meeting tomorrow?
Yes, that'd be fine, yep.
And I think the only other thing, and I don't know if this is a.
Who is our new, by the way, who's our new, you, good, all right, great, all right, all right, good, Owen, great.
Was any thought to give into putting that, uh, we meet, uh, there's meetings, regular meetings of the committee shall be held monthly as needed from March to October. It doesn't necessarily say the first, the second Tuesday of the month, I just know.
It's the second Tuesday of the month unless we change it.
Okay, so there's not a point to put a defined.
And I think we're going to kind of leave that a little bit, um.
Yeah, it's probably better to leave it a little loose, just in case.
Because we were meeting on the second Tuesday regularly because Charlton was the, our advisor. And sometimes he was out of town unless he was having the select board meeting the night before, so we kind of, we're accommodating his schedule. We don't have that situation any longer, so it's a little flexible. It's a little bit weather dependent as well.
It makes it easier for us to know that you're consistently meeting on a given time.
We are consistently meeting on the second Tuesday unless we decide to do it.
Unless circumstances intercede, yeah.
But to the point of the bylaws, I think Dave is right. It's better to leave it loose in the bylaws so that if, uh, you know, you have to change it for some reason, you're not in violation of the laws.
But if you're in doubt about when we're meeting, it's going to be the second Tuesday.
Okay. Um, do we wish to make a motion or hold this in abeyance until they have had a chance to rework it?
Let's hold it in abeyance.
Yeah, because you said you guys were going to meet tomorrow.
We're meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
So perhaps you can dot the i's and cross the t's and we'll.
Why don't we have a motion to table till August?
Still moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or comments? No. All in favor? We will do this in August.
Okay.
Thank you, David, and your group are doing a great job.
We're having a good time.
Yeah, that's important.
Saying you have the template that I put together for bylaws.
It got moved a week ago, I think, yeah. Uh, the next item is Rockport's Classic Quintennial Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Anniversary Planning Meeting.
Nicely said.
I just sort of.
Just run right through.
Run right through, no one will notice the difference.
Nobody will know whether or not.
As I said earlier, uh, we're holding the preliminary meeting on August twenty-fifth. Actually, the Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Celebration has already commenced, I believe. I'm, I'm looking at our representative from the Harbor Committee. But this is going to be a drawn out celebration, you know, it's not, when the separation from Camden occurred, it wasn't just a moment in time. It was a lot of preliminary work to make it happen. We're going to make a lot of preliminary work to make this one happen.
So for a number of years, there's been some interest in doing some, some sort of summertime event. Um, last summer, we tried and failed at, uh, setting a. Last summer, we tried and failed at setting a, having a bigger event down there, just trying to find a date that didn't, you know, conflict with everything was, was one of our major barriers, and we were trying to do a lobster crate race and things like that. So sort of living and learning from that, we've had some interest from some residents, Allison's in the back hiding, and Linda Clancy as well, approached me, and we've kind of been talking about doing something. And then with the 125th coming up, it would be nice to sort of drum up some interest and get some momentum going for that, with a sort of a celebrate Rockport celebration. Nothing too formal, but something that, and, and one of our ideas was, well, there's some things that happen already down at the Harbor. For instance, the lobster Sup Cup, which is the stand-up paddleboard race, that's the third annual paddleboard race, and it, last year it drummed up a lot of interest with people coming down, they had a kids' race, and it just was already a really nice event. So we said, hmm, you know, that event is planned, and we have a date, and it's a Sunday, it's August 9th this year. And the idea was sort of having, having some different themes for some different celebrations. This one would be celebrate Rockport, get moving. We'd have the Smoothie Shack is going to come down from Camden, Fox on the Run may or may not be there if she has an event that weekend, and doing some food stuff, hopefully some music, Bay Chamber has talked about trying to do some, some music down there, and then a cardboard boat race, which could be pretty fun and interesting. We're remodeling it, it has happened before, people have done this before, so we're not totally reinventing a wheel and, you know, setting people up for disaster, so it's possible. And the Boat Club has agreed to sort of head up a boat parade with some of the, some of the Boat Club boats, and, you know, some private boats as well. So we have some different things we can, actually, and CrossFit has talked about doing an obstacle course thing open to the sort of public, and doing something in the bigger lawn, so we have a lot of things drumming up for that. And then the next weekend, Bay Chamber has their jazz concert, the next weekend is the, whatever weekend comes after the night.
Fifteen, sixteen.
Yep, and they have some jazz musicians that come from, I think they're from New York, and they were there last year, and we had about a hundred people in the park, or probably over a hundred people in the park, and it was a really nice afternoon. So with those two events, we're hoping to drum up some, some momentum to celebrate the 125th, so it's a, you know, this isn't the 125th committee per se, but we're looking to get some momentum going in that direction, so, and hopefully get some interest and some motivated folks involved.
Okay. That's great, that's great. We, we are gonna want to form a committee, and probably give the committee the leeway to form subcommittees, but there's already an effort underway, if you want to start working early.
I can send you my list.
You can talk to Abby, or Rick.
There is, there also is a list already of some people who have stepped up and volunteered, Emily Lusher had sent me an email, wanting to be involved, so there's a kind of a core group of people, but I'd like to see.
Yeah.
Because it's gonna be a lot of work.
Okay.
Do we want to talk about how large we might want that committee to be, or leave it open, or?
I, I think we want to hold that until we get to the twenty fifth, in August 25th session, you know, to keep it, you know, maybe we want to think about it, but I don't think we want to make any decisions until we see what ideas are starting to percolate, because those could determine how many adjunct members and core committee and things like that.
I just don't want, I don't want them to have to wait for us, if they're ready to go to work, that's my only concern, I guess.
If we, great if we had one, sort of, always hard to get a spearhead everybody, a lot of people want to be involved, but nobody really wants to like, be the one to take completely charge, so if anybody has any great ideas that, of that one person, that would, you know, sort of.
Applications are now being taken for the Chair of the committee?
That would be great, right. It could be a fun, I mean, it's gonna be, I mean.
But we will have a lot of support on this, though.
Yeah. Because we don't even have dates for next year when we want to do things, right? I mean, the Sup Cup's like a kickoff thing.
Yeah, it's just a summer, sort of, right.
Right, the actual, what we want to do next spring-ish, summer-ish, right?
Yeah.
We still don't have that down.
It's all up in the air, but this is just our idea of, of getting, you know, celebrating Rockport, and, you know, a birthday celebration that lasts throughout the year.
How is it that you will tie in the events with the 125th in terms of signage?
Right, like a theme, and we, our problem is, we don't necessarily have a budget for this, so, you know, and that was something that we've sort of, we go like this a lot, like, oh, and then we sort of remember that we need to rein it in, because we don't have a budget. It would, would be great to have a celebrate Rockport sort of brand, if you will, and then so it sort of can flow into the 125th, but.
Yeah, is this committee willing to put up some of their lunch money from our discretionary budget to help with that?
For discretionary budget?
Because that will give them the freedom.
Know we had a discretionary budget?
Well, let's, let's think about that, that would give them the freedom to, to make signage and to say, hey, while you're here, I mean, it, the people that are coming.
Sign up, right.
Yeah, weren't, aren't necessarily aware.
Well, one of the ideas the committee might want to throw around, too, is a merchandise-type thing, perhaps it could be self-sustaining if we design the logo and then put it on a T-shirt and sell the T-shirts or something.
We are Rockport. We are, no, that's probably gonna fall. Okay, thank you, Abby, any, any quick ideas or suggestions?
Just a question, is there one date for the 125th, or is it like from February to?
I think the actual charter date is.
Yeah, the act, there is an actual date, it's like, I think, February 25th, or 21st?
Something like that.
Right.
Well, that was the date that the legislature said you are a par.
Right.
That's when they said we want the snowball fight.
Yeah.
There is a formal date, but it doesn't seem like February 25th is gonna be a day that people are gonna want to be outside and enjoy.
They don't want to put all your eggs in that one day.
Right, I mean, there, there should be some sort of a recognition on that day, on that evening, and one of the suggestions is the snowball fight with Camden at By the Arch, but, you know, that could get messy, too.
Could be fun.
It could be fun.
Could be, if we have snow.
Oh, it could be on the bridge, because the bridge is what caused the whole.
Yeah, that's true.
Push them over.
Okay. Then we're gonna move on ahead here now, we're gonna move to the approval of the change to the investment policy. When we first approved it, we had pulled the money for wastewater out of the investment fund, thinking that we were gonna need to use it. We didn't, and it's been moved back in with our approval a couple of months ago. Our finance director realized that the investment policy omitted reference to the wastewater fund, and has proposed to us a quick change, adding the one word.
Wastewater.
Wastewater. But we do want to be on top of this, make sure we are, we covered everything here, so I would entertain a motion to approve the addition of that one word.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, any discussion, questions?
Not grammatical thing, but under F, delegation of authority number one, but on page three, after and wastewater, period, underscore, the treasurer shall implement this policy, it's just, I didn't know what that underscore was supposed to be there. Top of page three.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Actually, I think the intention was to underline wastewater and not the space between the two.
Yeah.
And it was just, I didn't think it had any bearing on anything, just something that didn't stand out. And I've got like a skinny million questions on this, but that's not what this meeting is. One thing I'd like to throw out, though, is I'm very curious to look at what we're actually investing in, and propose, at some point in time further in the future, that we consider divesting from any hydrocarbon fossil fuel-based stocks and bonds that we have.
We've actually had this conversation.
That we have had this conversation, the investment committee, which meets quarterly, has discussed it, and come to the conclusion that it would be not beneficial for the town to try to do that, because you start to get into the little tentacles that start running out from some companies, and it probably almost excludes a lot of the funds that are, mutual-type funds that are available, plus a lot of very proactive or great returns. Our funds are run through Bar Harbor Trust and Savings, they have a program, and the investment committee, which are made up of very, very professional people, look at, watches it every month and asks the questions. But Jenny can forward on the investment reports that we receive to use, so you can see what our health, it's a fairly limited number of assets, really.
I, I think my, I've slept since then, but my memory is a little bit different, in that I think that their counsel, their, their investment person, this is certainly not something new for her. So she was, she was in that conversation, which went on for half an hour or so, she was saying, hey, you could do this, you could do that, so it's not that Bar Harbor Bank and Trust is, is again it, and they don't, they're squirming. Perhaps, perhaps our own committee is squirming more than, more than the, the trust is, but I, I think that warrants a second round of conversation, being the rabble-rouser that I am.
Okay, well, I can have that on the agenda for the next investment committee meeting, which is, I think, the end of August? Or is it September? September. Yes.
Yeah, oh, that's right, I probably have it here on the.
Yes, at 4:00 PM on September 21st at the town office. September 21st, 4:00 PM. Yep, cool, just before our cemetery workshop. You know, and your public is welcome to attend these, they're very informative, and you actually learn a lot about investment policies, just listening to them talk about them, so.
I move to approve the Rockport investment policy as presented with the addition of the wastewater.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Didn't we already do that?
Oh, well, wait, did we already have the motion?
And we're in the discussion portion.
Yes, we're in the discussion portion.
And many apologies, under I, investment diversification, number, it's on page four, on number three, bond maturities shall be three years of less. I don't know if, if that's a term.
More or less.
More or less, that was what I thought.
Or less, yes, and they do make sure that that's a year, too.
Great.
And that's a typo that we can correct, so with that typo correction, any further discussion? Questions or comments? Very none, all in favor of approval? It is unanimous. The next one, we have a request by the owners of 120, of 23 Main Street to extend their second-floor porch. We have a memo from the finance, or from the.
Planning.
Planning and Development Director, who has consulted with the town attorney on what this all entails and what the impact could be. We have before us the information that was presented, several pictures of what it currently looks like, and the request is to extend the overhang or porch on the second floor out one additional foot, twelve inches. I spoke with the, with Frank Amato, Jamie Frank Amato, was it last Thursday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
And he indicated that the attorney had come back, and suggested the way we could make this happen if we wanted to, would be to create a revocable license agreement. The gist is that we would approve them extending this, but if a future board wanted not to have that done, they could revoke.
Ooh, man.
The agreement, which means they would have to take it back off.
What was the rationale behind that being? Well, one of the challenges with this is, I mean, unfortunately, Jamie's not here because of a death in the family, one of the challenges is, how does this get to you? How does this get in front of the Select Board? And, you know, it's, it's kind of a land use issue, but it's kind of not, and, you know, does it go to the planning board, but the planning board only can, has authority, you know, is only dealing with up to the property line, and this is past the property line in the quote airspace over town property. And so how does it get to you without creating a situation where all of these, where all land use things skip past the planning board and come directly to you? And so the challenge, that was the challenge in this. It's, it's an interesting question, and, you know, I, I was reluctant to get it to have, to come to you until it had gone through all of the appropriate steps, because it, this is a different one, this is a different kind of request, and we wanted to make sure that it was done correctly. And after a legal consultation, the, the best we could come up with was the, this revocable use, which the planning board, I believe, weighed in, correct, John?
Yeah, we, we looked at it from the point of view of a, you know, architectural review, ones with it, we said, fine, looks good to us, get permission from the Select Board. Because it's actually, you're giving permission to use this over-town-owned property.
And so that's the, the bottom line, is, you know, but then how do we do that in a way that makes sense and isn't more binding than it has to be? I mean, I don't know, I mean, Rick, the, the owner of the property is here, Crimmens is here, the idea of having that, that, you know, if another board came in and just didn't like the color of his shirt he was wearing today, they decided that they wanted to revoke that license, you know, they could revoke the license and make them take that porch back off.
My, my understanding was, did I give a very formal thing, a town meeting, approve it with residents, and it's such a small thing, and you don't want to have, have a little real estate issue like that go through a town meeting issue. Making it a revocable license means the town is not permanently granting any distribution or giving up assets without full discussion, and if someone wants to change their mind, they could, yes, I'd be annoyed if you had to cut a foot off my porch. I have respect for my fellow citizens here in town, it's a problem I could be capricious and just zap it back, but it doesn't bind the, the town to ongoing distribution property or something. So talking to my attorney, talking to the town attorneys, and lots of other people around, this seemed to be the easiest, less complicated way to make the building look nicer and have a nicer face on Main Street.
If you look at it, it's, it's hard to, you know, much, once it's pointed out, you can see, it's different than the neighbors, the, there's one next door that's a foot wider.
Yeah, two feet, yeah.
So it, you know, you don't notice the difference until you point it out and you say, oh, yeah, okay. It's so small, it's, it's unusable the way it is.
Right now, it's only about three feet, which means you can't put a table and chairs on it, and by adding out about a foot, a small table, two, three chairs, you can sit, overlook the harbor, enjoy, enjoy some champagne or something.
So you could watch the snowball fight from there.
You know, no, I cannot see all the way to the arch.
Oh, no, if we move it, if we move it to the bridge.
If we put it on the bridge.
Oh, so we're like, we're giving throws to the balls.
Yeah.
I also have to do some work on the porch, it's getting hunky, the wood drive, the railing itself is marginally safe, so I want it to get stronger, I also like to have it more, have a prettier pattern to it, so I have to do something to the porch anyway, it should be nice to make it a little bit larger, so it's more usable.
Fifteen years, again, I've slept since then, but fifteen years on the, on the ZBA, the one thing that is very clear to me is that all zoning ordinances and what have you are, are focusing on the idea of, to make things that are non-conforming less non-conforming. But it doesn't seem that we have any statement in here about encroaching, anyway, going into somebody else's property, in this case, it's the town. And I think two of the things that I'd like to see, if, if we don't deal with this entirely today, is how does this overhang go with the idea of lot coverage? Because lot coverage is a weird thing, that is it what's actually on the ground, or is it something that's above the ground that, that, for instance, prevents the rainfall? And there are a lot of things that, that are good. And there are a lot of things that, that a good sharp Z B A board would, would at least look at carefully to see whether this effort is in line with, with what the town wants to do. And, and again, picking up on Rick's comments, that do, are we the first step or are we the last step? And whereas the, the planning board sort of makes it, you know, their job is to, is to say, oh, okay, we can do this. It's, you know, this is how we're going to make it to work within the other things around it. The Z B A really is the board that says, is this, is this a direction, is this an action that is consistent with, with what we have? And it seems to be relatively unique, so we may not have any guidance at all.
I wouldn't think the Z B A would have any guidance because they're looking at the ordinances and there are no ordinances.
Well, except lot coverage, except.
Right, but this doesn't cover their lot, it covers our lot, so.
And it's a very, it's a very unique situation.
Yeah, well, but they're also in the downtown district, which.
Which has.
Hundred percent lot coverage, so it's not the fact that maybe it's a non-conforming building at this point. John?
We discussed, I think, the zoning board of appeals and we decided it wasn't relevant. It, it wasn't something that they needed to be concerned with, that was our view of it.
The planning board discussed whether the zoning board should be part of it.
Yeah, yeah, it was a discussion and we said, you know, we agreed. It was presented to us by Jamie, by the planning director. This really is for the town. It goes beyond what the zoning board of appeals might would be considering. They're looking at the current ordinances and see whether, you know, is there something there that they need to overcome in the interests of the community? That's how I see it. But this didn't fall into that category. To me, I think it's an improvement just by the way, you know, of what's there. It looks fine from what they're planning, but that's, you know. Go ahead, Ken.
On balance, you look at this and it just makes all the sense in the world. My concerns are precedence. What are we going to set for precedent for coming to the select board? And it is, as Rick said, a very unique situation, so, you know, hopefully it doesn't open the floodgates. Plus, I think the planning board fairly had a fairly extensive discussion about it, from what I understand. The revocable license piece troubles me a little bit just because of, you know, if somebody else gets elected to the select board in another two years, it makes you cut off the deck.
No, I, I prefer you guys grant the carpet in a revocable, no circumstances, but really that's not likely to happen. Our attorney, Rock, who was over the years, said, well, actually, this might be the more appropriate way, making it easy. And Jamie also said, doing the license was a fairly standard way of a town granting authorization without handcuffing the town in perpetuity and getting into issues of disposition of public property.
I wonder if we can go halfway in between and maybe grant it for a finite number of years.
Halfway between half?
But we're talking, but we're talking about, you know, the major part of a, of a structure here, sorry.
Tracy's up next.
So my, my concern, my overall concern, in addition to precedence, is liability. And this basically takes care of that. If, if we as a town were to say, it's unsafe, we could give notice and say, you got to take it down in this amount of time. I mean, I, that's where I would see us, us, as in whoever sits here in years in the future, looking at this. That's where I would see, that's where you would kick it in. Not to be mean, not to say, I don't like you, cut it down. But to say, you know, somebody years in the future hasn't taken care of it and the town says, we have a liability because that's over our sidewalk and we gave them the right to do that. And I think that's when we would, you, when we would invoke that and say, no, you got thirty days or whatever it says, to take it down.
Sorry, I'm sorry. But in theory, couldn't they just cut the foot off and say, we're back to where we were before, so we don't have to take it down? I cut my foot back off.
Well, my understanding of the ways the attorneys said is that if the town decided, no, it's unsafe or, or you're building a double stack or highway outside or something awful, I could then figure out how to cut it off and have it still be, be fine. I mean, yes, that's my option, is not tear down the building or tear down the whole porch.
Right.
Right. But I, I mean, for me, that's when we would have a logical reason to revoke that clause if we don't feel it's safe, it hasn't been taken care of properly, whatever. So for me, the big thing is precedence and we're granting something over our property. I don't, I hope to not see things like over a park or over, and we do have a lot of properties in this town. I'm thinking that because it's in the village and because of the nature of the village, there is a bigger need for it there, if maybe the only place there would be a need. But I think we need to maybe mull on that a little bit before, I, I feel like I need to mull on that a little bit more before I can say we're good.
Yeah, because I, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, we've got some vacant properties down there that are in the district that has a hundred percent lot, lot coverage. And would this create a precedence that would mean that we would have to grant?
Right, so any of these other properties downtown could say, we want to put balconies out in the front of our building and, and, you know, you need, you have to say yes because you let somebody else do it.
Is that not different, new construction of a balcony versus extension of a balcony? Those seem like two different things to me.
Well, not, not from a, not from a perspective, really, this is unsupported by ordinances. So my, either way, you know, either to the positive or to the negative. So my reaction is that is twofold. One, this whole revocable thing, I think, is, is a little bit crazy. So you either say, yes, you can do it, and here's why, you know, point to an ordinance or point to no ordinance. And then at such a point, if the ordinance is changed, which is a townwide voted upon situation, then any additional major work would trigger a, would trigger that whole idea of less non-conforming. So if, at a point where, you know, forty-five years from now, it was rotting again, and if in the meantime, there had been an ordinance that said, no, you can't do that, then upon the major reconstruction of it, you'd have to pull it back. And that, that's the trigger to, to, to get non-conforming things like this, if it was non-conforming. But I would feel a whole lot better for this conversation to spur a, an aha moment that says, oh, that's unaddressed in the, in the ordinances. Consequently, let's write a good ordinance that, that is appropriate to, to what Rockport wants to look like in the village, in the Harbor Village, and then let's everybody do it. And, and to me, it, it then eliminates the precedence of coming to the select board for things that are really done with the O R C., with the Z B A. and with the planning board. So we're still within channels. It, the unfortunate thing is, is that Rick's got, you know, he's got to do something because it's going to go, and fall down.
It's going to fall down next week.
Right, yeah. So, so in, in, but in that case, I, I think we also have to look at what some of our neighbors have done when they've rushed decisions that have gone out of channel.
Well, I think your comment about the ordinance is something that I had thought of as well is, because you could not only write an ordinance to, to prevent it, but you could also write an ordinance to allow it.
Allow it, and to allow it quite nicely, I mean.
And in that case, if, if that's the course that we're going to think about taking over the next one, two years or something, then the revocable license works for me because then, you know, you could, knowing that you're going to fix it.
That's an interesting, right.
Okay, but when you say allow, so you're saying building in town space over town land, you want to write an ordinance that allows people to do that?
Well, I think what you would have to write is something specific to the downtown district, you know, over the sidewalks only, not over the roads, not over the parks, you know, to address this particular type of situation, have to be very specific and very limited.
And, and it's, and it's an appropriate question to ask and one that I would support. I mean, you look at Lord Camden Inn, has its little balconies coming out.
But they don't stick out. All of theirs are flung.
I'll go wash my glasses then.
Now, the new, the new hotel does, the one that's where the Bayview Cinema is, they're hanging out and I'm kind of, they kind of scare me watching them put those up there, how they're bolting those to the side of that building. But that's me, and I don't know what they, I don't know what they're over because they let them build a new sidewalk there. So I don't know if that sidewalk, who that sidewalk belongs to in front of that building. But they're right there, they're hanging out over there and around the back in the alleyway. So they have something written.
I'd like to point out what I'm proposing, actually, is going to improve the sidewalk. Name the sidewalk, so there's less snow and ice, less rain on you. As opposed to saying, Lord Camden anywhere, it's a little swivel coming out. You, you can't dash from one end to the other. So I, we're making it a nicer walkway out of rain and whatnot. It would be more of a side, the positive effects. The other part of it, which is, to try to make sure we don't have any falling ice. I've had complaints about falling ice off the roof, which last winter was one of the worst ones in recent memory. I've since put up ice rails on the roof to prevent that from happening. But if I get my deck out a little bit farther and even avoids that, it should hit my deck and not hit the pedestrian. So I think it's a, it actually is a public improvement, it isn't strictly a private improvement.
One other item I'd like to suggest in, in the license itself, and that typically in licenses like this, and I don't see it here, there would be a requirement, and I don't imagine that you wouldn't have it anywhere, but a requirement that you have liability insurance, that the licensee would have liability insurance and possibly even naming the town as an additional insured. That's not in here.
Actually, my attorney wrote the first license, he sent it off to your attorneys and I think your attorney actually, in oversight, sniffed out the liability insurance. But of course, that's liability insurance.
There was some, there's a section here that says licensee agrees to indemnify, basically. But, but nothing in here that I can find that, that requires you to have, you know, show proof of liability.
Well, indemnify the town is, you, you figure out how to, how to make it right.
Right, but if we don't require them to have insurance, they can indemnify the town. But if he, if something happens and he doesn't have insurance and, and in some case, he doesn't have any assets, then we're stuck holding the bag.
Well, actually, you're stuck holding the right next to your property.
Yeah.
Right. So I, I, that's a pretty simple thing to add, it would seem to me. And if our, if our attorney took it out, I would, I would want to know why.
I definitely would not, I, I mean, any consideration we make to approving this tonight can't have any changes. I, I, it would have to go through the attorney first.
Right.
And I honestly, I'm, I don't feel that positive about, about this. I, I still have questions that are still percolating in my head about, about the long-term thought of giving people license, for lack of a better term today, town, whether it be sidewalks or parks or whatever. So I, I personally feel like this is something we need to get more information or at least spend some more time hashing out because it, it, it seems like a big step. I know it's, I know it's probably an important step for you to get taken care of, but I feel like it's a big step precedence wise of us saying yes or no tonight, for me.
Can I just ask you a question, Tracy? What would make you feel comfortable as far as, I mean, like.
Right now, nothing, well, that's why I'm saying.
You need to wait. Walking down and you see a new construction thing, you know, having, having it stated that it has to be built to a certain code, to a certain standard.
No, the whole point is, is you're building over town space.
And that's what makes you uncomfortable.
And that, that specific issue, until I find a way to be more comfortable with it, with information or finding out what other towns may do precedence wise, I, I don't feel comfortable saying that it's okay to let someone, even just one person, build over that space more than they already are.
As much as, you know, I, Bill and I talked about this, this is a lot for the board to, sorry, Ken. Bill, Ken and I talked about, this is, this is a big, this is a big step. And, you know, my expectation was that, I didn't think you were going to be able to approve this at this meeting. I think there's a lot for you to think about, to, to think you're going to, you're going to be able to walk out of here and give an approval at this meeting, particularly Jamie's not here. But I think there's, there's, you've, you've made a lot of really good comments and, and I can hear Ginny over there typing away, so she's gathering all those comments. And, you know, we can look at it and bring it back at a subsequent meeting for you to, it's a lot to digest. This is a big, this is a big thing and, and, I mean, it seems, it seems small, a foot, but there's, there's a lot that's, it's a lot that's part of this, so.
We don't drag this out longer. A diversity of, of opinions or thoughts on this, some of which need to be answered, some of which need to be thought through better or, you know, give us time to cogitate on, on the implications here and further information about the implications. I thought we were going to have a longer statement from our town attorney as to what this was, more of a narrative of, you know, okay, what's the implication? How is this?
And how have other people handled it? How have other towns handled this?
How have other towns handled it, what precedences are there, things like that. You know, what I'm, what I'm driving at here is, I think we want, you know, what I'm hearing is, we, we don't want to say no, but we don't want to say yes. We want a table and get more information so that we can make an informed decision. This is out of our normal, you know, comfort zone. We don't, we, I don't, I have no recollection of us ever being asked for something like this since the town charter went in.
What did, what did the select board do, or the planning board, or the Z B, when the balconies were installed initially or originally?
Those prior, prior to.
Prior to our zoning.
Yeah.
Both of them.
Well, in this case, they're on their, they, they only cover to their property line. I don't think they actually extend out.
President Baloney extends over town sidewalk.
Oh, it does?
And has had for a hundred years.
Yeah, and, and the one beside you is the same way, though they rebuilt it a few years ago.
Well, I've heard there's an awful lot of contention in these properties long before I owned it and I'm not, don't know all the details of it, so I don't know how long these documents have been there, but it just definitely extends over town line, and I'm quite sure mine does. And my understanding was, mine was from the original construction back in eighteen ninety or whatever it was. Those, those.
Yes, their grandfather, yeah, they're, yep. Yeah, I, I figured that.
Can I say one last thing?
Okay.
Not, not to put any sort of time pressure on us to figure this out, but I'm just curious. This would need to be resolved by when to have it built before winter? I'm just kind of curious. Do you have a timeline on building construction, once we approve it or not?
My contractor actually is busy, busy with another project from mine on Pre-Haven Island. And so this summer is going to be pretty busy, so I'm not going to be able to get him finished there for a while.
So this isn't going to be crazy for you? This does give us some time to figure it out?
I would really like to know within a couple of months that, yes, it's a go because I've got some other projects I'm doing, trying to improve the property. And yes, I have to prove how I would do that and that, as opposed to gibbs and drabs.
The question is answered by next month's meeting.
Okay. And with Ginny's notes, you have the questions that need to be addressed and information provided to us? I think the sooner you can give us information, the more we can think about it before next meeting, so. Do we wish, do we wish to table?
Move to table.
Second.
And the intent here is to hear back by our August meeting. So with that, no further discussion, all in favor, it has been tabled. We'll work on it.
Final question, is there anything else you'd like me to provide or can I help you in your deliberations or just shut up and go away and do what happens?
No, I think Rick will be in touch with you if you need anything. But thank you very much for coming and talking about it, it was very helpful.
Okay. Our next item, we are going to discuss or, and give direction to the town manager regarding implementing certain corrections to the public library. When we held our goals workshop a week and a half ago, I think it was, we sort of identified three major issues that we wanted looking at right now based on the, the C E S report. Those were vacating and or strengthening the second floor as well as providing proper egress or emergency exit from there. Something to do with the mold that they were identified in the crawl spaces. And then possibly doing some work on securing the building envelope, if that would be feasible at this time. So that is before us. I, I know we have a number of people here in the audience that are, I believe, wish to weigh in. We did receive, as soon as I can find it, information from Peter Tool at C E S, the, the structural engineering firm, one dealing with the, as they put it, the mold fungi. And their, I'm trying to find, their expert in that area believes that it is. is easily identifiable and that some remedial inform, uh, work could be done, um, sealing around ventilation ducts and things like that, providing air circulation in that area, that we would not need to do a full-blown, uh, air study on that. They also got back to us on the second floor, uh, they do not think that it is in danger of collapsing, though in effect, they'd like to see the, uh, storage that is up there now, the book storage, uh, removed from the, uh, from that area, placed somewhere else to reduce the workload. Uh, the area around, in, in the, uh, library director's office is well-supported from below, uh, but that, a second form of exit needs to be considered for that, so, um, so that's the background information that I have received, so. Does anyone wish to make comment before we get into our discussion? As I said at the beginning, comment will be welcome prior each agenda item. Oh, Anne? Okay. Anne Philly, our library director.
Thank you for your time this evening. I just wanted to, uh, state for the record that, um, moving, uh, the books that are up there as part of the storage, um, area, those books are utilized by patrons throughout the library system on a regular basis. We've moved them up there because they're considered somewhat classics and we had to make room. I also wanted to just let you know that, um, if you felt that the director's office needed to come down, um, that would have to put that, uh, space, the current space that we are utilizing now for employees is approximately sixty-three square feet, sixty-three. Currently, I have about eighty square feet upstairs of office space, so if we could avoid jamming one more person into that, that would be really great. I do want to just have you think about, and I know that you are thinking about this, the idea of safety, um, and think about what is really safe for the employees, the people who work there forty-plus hours a week. And in terms of, um, mold, radiation, I do get a little nervous thinking about fans going on, and we have limited access to plugs and, um, there's a noise factor. You know, it might be a really great opportunity to remediate some of the problems, but it's not just the lower quadrant of the floors that have that smell. So I have a feeling it might have gone into the walls as well, and I'm not sure that fans will do the job. I also wanna think about safety and conditions for the patrons who come in every day. Um, you know, we've, and you may hear it tonight, we have people who have asthma, who have difficulties coming in. We have, um, uh, people who are just not able to access the space safely. We've had people who have fallen. We have people who cannot turn around in a wheelchair. And I really want us to think, and I know we're gonna do a workshop, but I really want us to get our heads around the fact that maybe, um, along with doing some of this remediation, is that we really then strike, um, a forward-thinking approach to what do we want to have as our library? You know, and I don't really care where it is, you know, me personally, I mean, I'm a Rockport resident. I just wanna make sure that we are more focused on that future, bringing it up more quickly than on trying to stuff us all into this small space that's almost unbreathable at some points. You know, I just want us to think much more globally, uh, much more positively. I think we can get there. I just want us to really think about how do we value the people who come to work every day? You know, we've been living with this for quite some time. I just want it to have it first and foremost, so thank you.
Thank you. Stevie, did you wanna say something too?
I did. It'll take me a while to talk there, so I'll be a little bit faster.
You can come up from the front way.
Oh, no, that's okay. I'll get my notes here.
Anne, what did you think of the portable office idea that would be outside?
Well, I haven't heard too much about that.
And I wanted to ask Rick on an update of it, I was curious about that, and I wanted to get your feel, if that would help mitigate some of that.
I think if we had, um, utilizing this storage rather than office, because quite honestly, in the middle of winter, not so crazy about that, um, but I think a storage space in a, and I, I, I think we have to think very short-term, um, that might be something that, that's doable, but having an office outside, I think, kind of takes away what we do as, as a library. Just throwing it out there.
Stevie?
Uh, I think, and I've talked to a lot of you, my concerns have to do with the, I think, within the, in the, uh, agenda, possible mold in the lower level. We unfortunately, at home, two years ago, our house was built in nineteen seventy-eight, and it had, when we started addressing water issues, we found mold in the interior, as Anne said. In some places, it had gotten into the sheet rock. It was, it's cheap T-111 used to be. And my concern about just attempting to remediate mold that may be there in the basement without even looking at the floors, the walls, with, you know, pushing that pencil through that wood, obviously moisture has gotten in the walls. Um, and it's a much older building than my house was. So I, I have tremendous concern for the staff, for kids, when some people may remember the RES situation with the horrific mold. I mean, there are like nineteen, twenty kinds of molds, guys, and they can't be remediated by fans. And when I look at the idea of spending, and nothing's been addressed in terms of radon, the CES study addressed the possibility of lead paint, uh, all those other issues, mercury was one of the things, things they addressed. So when I look at the, in the past two years, appropriating fifty thousand dollars to make some corrections on a building that in my reading of that study, basically a failed building, and not to spend two or three thousand dollars to address a serious, potentially serious, health issue, I think is just, as a tax, I'm talking as a taxpayer and a resident and a user right now, not as a library committee member. So I, I just, I'm, I'm just tremendously upset by the, by these priorities.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm gonna open it up here for our discussion. Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't see you.
One of the things that I think that we have going for us right now is a sense of urgency. The CES study in combination with Steve's report really brought, uh, to, really highlighted these issues that we've been struggling with. And I do think that the, the best thing we can do at this point is to take that sense of urgency and make some really, as Anne said, some really forward-thinking decisions rather than Band-Aid solutions, especially expensive Band-Aid solutions that we know are, are temporary and, um, insufficient at best. So I would urge you, as you think about what happens, now, I, I know there's a, a feeling of, oh, winter is right around the corner again, but you do have a, a workshop on the calendar already. There are a lot of good people who are thinking about how to approach this in a way that is a more, uh, long-term solution. I would urge you not to make expensive, short-term decisions until you have a long-term plan. Thank you.
Anyone else?
There I will.
Rick, you, um-
Yeah, the-
Say something.
The challenge is, is that, I mean, I mean, the idea, we, we just got the report just recently. We've, the, the, we, we got the report recently, the problems have existed for many years and they've gotten worse. The challenge is to not overreact and do something that's gonna waste our money and our effort and, and come up with a, something that will move us in a direction and a goal. Unfortunately, I, you know, I was surprised that the, I, I think the best course of action would be to have the library committee meet and the select board meet sooner than September. You know, there's, you know, so that we can start to answer those questions, is to figure out a date that will work and move that, move that conversation up earlier, um, because there are some things, and, and, I mean, I, the, the mold question, I had that quite, the same question Stevie had, is, 'cause I'm not an expert at mold, but when the expert comes back and says, you know, the, 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 the only thing we're gonna get out of that is we're gonna, it's, the air quality's gonna say we have mold, and here's what I would tell you to do to remediate that mold in the short-term. And, you know, we have that recommendation. Um, do we, you know, the question is, do we want, when do we wanna, where do we wanna draw the line and say, you know, we're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars on a building if everybody is in the, in the same boat of saying, you know what, we, we're kinda all on board that maybe the building has to go? And, you know, when do we, when do we get to that point where we say enough is enough, let's move forward? But I don't think we can do that until that, to the library committee and the select board actually sit down and have that conversation. And trying to answer these questions today without the library committee and the select board having a chance to kind of strategize a plan is, we're gonna be wasting time, you know?
Yes. Stay, please.
Thank you.
You're a member of the library committee?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I mean, I, I agree actually with everything that's already been said, but I think that in terms of, even if we could meet tomorrow night and as a library committee, all sign on to a particular vision, we can't enact that vision in the next three weeks. I mean, whatever the vision is, whether it's, we're gonna, you know, build a new building, whether we're gonna, I mean, whatever it is, it's gonna be a huge project. So something has to be done for at least the short-term. And, and that decision really, I think, falls to the folks who are responsible for the integrity of the building. What is the most cost-effective, short-term solution probably isn't even really the library committee's purview, although I agree with everybody who's spoken early, that it's, it needs to be a high priority for the people who work in the library. They deserve a safe, comfortable working environment and for the people who, who use the library, the public. But I don't think as a library committee, we're really the ones to figure out what the, you know, one-month, six-month kind of solutions are, because the vision isn't gonna change that answer. All you can do is remediate what's there or move into a temporary site. I mean, there really aren't any other solutions. And that, and that's really not for the library committee to decide, that's really probably more for you to decide, while the library committee tries to get together and assimilate all the building information and all the project information and all the information from the votes and, and all these sources, and pulls together a longer-term vision, which I really do think is our responsibility and it's what we're tasked to do. And I actually think having a couple of weeks before that meeting is scheduled to happen isn't unreasonable as we individually get our thoughts and our priorities together. So I, I feel like I'm sort of batting the ball back and forth with you, Rick, but I don't, and I don't mean to be doing that, I think we're really all on the same page, but there really are some short-term things that have been spoken to-
Right.
-and then longer-term things. Thanks.
It, it's a challenge, and it's, it's, it's almost a cart or horse, chicken and egg question we have here, is which do we do and when do we do it? And, you know, we just got that information, and there, there are things we could do short-term, and then there's some other things that are gonna cost us money, and, and I can't, I can't sit here and say, spending money on people's safety is, we can't do that, but there are other, you know, is there other alternatives we have? I mean, as you just mentioned, do we, when, when do we get to the point where everybody agrees, the existing building isn't gonna make it? When do we move to the next step? But you, the, that can't happen until the select board and the library committee sit down and have a conversation about, are we ready to move to the next step?
Well-
And, and, but we're, we're looking at September.
Yeah.
Do you want me to start spending money building an egress and, and move, and renting space to move stuff to?
So-
That's what we're here to discuss.
Right.
Yeah, can I-
Tracy?
I, I don't, the, the decision over whether or not we are gonna continue to put money in the building or pour money in the building is a decision that the five of us need to make, and that's not a decision that is in the library committee's hands. And I think that personally, I'm kinda getting close to pulling the trigger, we've got a lot of information in front of us that tells us this building has major issues. And, um, the six of us receive, or actually, plus Kate, received the email that I sent out right after this meeting, saying that I think we need it, we, we need to make sure that everything on the second floor is out of there immediately. And that's definitely something we can do immediately, to be quite honest, whether that just be what's stored up there, which I think is critical, or the having personnel up there, which I, I think is important as well. But it is the purview of the five of us sitting here as to whether or not we continue to choose to put Band-Aids on this building, um, which may be something we have to do, or whether or not we put our foot down and say, this building is not a long-term building. We will not do anything major to this building. We are going to push to make whatever next steps need to happen, happen. And I don't know what those next steps are, but if we aren't, if we aren't going to put heart and soul into the building we have, which with the information I've received in the last few weeks, I don't feel like that is the best use of our town's money, but we need to make that decision. The five of us need to get to that point where we're willing to vote and say, this building is a short-term building, these are the things we're willing to do to a short-term building, and these are the things we are not willing to do, so that Rick has clear direction as to how we want him to move forward. Because I, I, I know he, he can move forward with things that need to be taken care of, but I really feel like with the hazards that our employees and our citizens encounter in that building right now, we need to push forward ourselves, the five of us, into how we need to make that decision amongst ourselves. And that's the first step. And maybe that's a step we need to take before we meet with the library committee, so that we go to them, and obviously, they can come, they're all public meetings, and they'll know that whether or not we think we are going to continue to try to keep this building up and running.
Okay, yep. Jeff?
So I'm not sure why, I, I think, I'm not afraid of stepping in the fray or any of that, but I'm not sure why we would go ahead and make decisions. Obviously, some Band-Aids are needed, some long-term vision is needed, but I'm not sure why we would make those decisions independent of input from the library committee, 'cause even tonight, we heard, you know, you have a concern with upstairs, get everything out of there altogether. Anne says she can't fit down in with sixty-three square feet, uh, and she doesn't want an, an outside office in the wintertime. And, and those books are in circulation, they just happen to be in a different part of the library. So for us to, I wouldn't say complicitously, but for us to go ahead and make operational, what, decisions that will affect the operation of the library seems to me to be misguided without the conversation with the library committee. Who knows, you know, this is, this is a huge, uh, uh, matrix of, of possibilities, and I happen to agree with you, I think the building is- And I happen to agree with you, I think the building is, is on its way out. But there obviously is some stuff we have to do and, and, you know...
But that's two different things I'm talking about. I'm just saying, the, the specific things we choose to do, whether it be move Ann out, move the storage out, which is something that I've addressed because I personally think that's important, that is independent of whether or not we choose or we make a decision about what we want to do with that building. And that's the purview of the five of us. That decision over whether or not we continue to try to fix that building or we choose to say that building is not the future of our library, that's our decision. The way we go about doing that, yes, is something to do with the library committee. But we need to make that overall choice, I think, in the next few weeks before we try to figure out what our steps are. Because making that decision, one way or another, is going to really help us decide what those next few steps are.
A point on that, next few weeks, we've got people in and out of town. Actually, even beyond our August meeting, that we're, you know, I think starting Wednesday, we will have at least one person out of town all the way through, beyond our next meeting. And my feeling is we don't want to try to make this decision without the full board being able to provide input, thoughts, considerations and that. So with that said, um, did you have a continuation before? Okay. I wanted to go back, you said something and I wrote it down and I'm not sure what you meant. Temporary site. Are you suggesting that we just move out?
I'm just saying from a public health perspective, the only choices are to make that safe or to move the library somewhere else temporarily while you either make it safe or replace it.
Okay.
I mean, there really aren't any other choices, right?
That's the bottom.
I hadn't got my head around that one yet.
That's what you come to. I mean, you either say it's so unsafe and unusable that you, we need to be somewhere else at least for the short term or you make it safe and usable as, as cost-effectively as you can while the longer-term plans be developed.
You know, again, I'm reacting here, but I've been thinking that the longer-term plan is several years.
I think, I think it's going to take a couple of years to get a whole plan together, to finance it, to develop it.
Okay, you know, we're on the same, we're on the same page here. Kathleen?
I would agree with Stephanie that, you know, if that's, if that's where you're headed, if that, and it sounds like, I think all of you have said, this building is on its way out. Even if the longer-term plan is a new building, it's, it's go, that longer-term plan will include getting rid of the building that exists. So, why put money into it if that money would be better spent on rent for another location? That actually was safe for our staff and our patrons.
Here's just my two cents on the whole thing. I think that we should actively push to figure out, one, where the library will go, two, what the library will look like, three, what the budget to build that would, would look like as well. All things that need to be figured out very quickly. But we don't have answers to any of those things. The one thing that we do know is that building has safety concerns. And what I don't want to do is go home at night and know that Ann's going to work tomorrow in a place where if there's a fire, there's a safety concern. If maybe that's the day where you finally inhale that last bit of mold to give you the crazy crud or whatever it is. And so I think we should solve these problems very quickly and figure out what we're going to do. But in the short term, we've got to put some Band-Aid on it to have peace of mind that we're having town employees go to a building that's safe. And that's where I don't want to be, you know, I liked how you put it. Are we, are we putting money into it or are we dumping money into it? And I'm not a fan of dumping money into it if it's just going to get torn down. But I am a fan of putting money into it if it gives us a little bit of peace of mind that while we figure this problem out, they're working in a safe place. That's my two cents.
But these, these priorities are not inexpensive priorities to address. There's not, if there were a cheap fix to mold remediation, Tracy, I'm guessing you probably would have. There's not a, there's not a cheap way to solve these problems temporarily. There's an expensive way and there's an exorbitantly expensive way. And both of those are problematic from a taxpayer perspective, especially when we just heard that we're going to have an increase in our middle rate whether we do anything or not.
Ken?
Yeah, we have to put Band-Aids on the building unless we're going to move out of it tomorrow, which I don't think we're going to do. And I think the, the long-term vision has to happen as well, but these things have to happen in parallel. The long-term vision is going to move ahead and I think there's a new urgency in town with these reports to move forward on that and to come together on a consensus of what the long-term plan is going to be. But, uh, as many of you have stated, the long-term plan isn't going to be finished for a significant period of time, many months to a year or two. So we have to address, what are we going to do with the library in the short term, which is the next weeks, months, whatever? Some of the suggestions that have been brought up, you know, I certainly think the storage space could be emptied and we could get a storage pot. I agree with Ann that having her office outside is probably not the best solution. We can perhaps add some egress there to help with that situation. We can't raise the roof, so to speak, because that would be spending good money out of bad.
And we've already cut up that building in ways it's not supposed to be cut up.
The mold issue, and I think what's being suggested here is not something that's going to remove the mold. But all it's going to do is, is prevent further infiltration than what we already have. And that, I don't know what the cost of that's going to be and what, maybe one of the things we want to do tonight is task Rick with finding out what the cost of some of these short-term things will be.
It says in here somewhere.
But, you know, I think it's worth looking into what that cost would be to install the ventilation and then seal that lower level a little bit more. Stevie, you're right, there may very well be mold in the walls. If there's mold in the walls and it's, and it's that bad, then, then, you know, we would have to get out of the building. There's no, no way around that. But if, if there's not mold in the walls, then, and we can forestow, do something about the moisture down below to keep it from, in the short term, months to a year, to keep it from getting much worse and to help the air quality at least a little bit for the employees and the patrons. And that may be worth doing, depending on what the cost is.
And also, do we testing for mold remediation?
Well...
For the testing, right? Just to put the...
Do we need any more evidence that the building is not, you know, the building is not... It's not going to... And do we need any more testing of mold to...
Just, just a minute, we have another. David, you haven't said anything yet on this. All right. Can he be heard from there?
Yeah, he's got a lot of buzz to it.
Okay.
I think I've seen this movie before. For anyone who was around here when we were, um, considering building new schools, I personally served on three school building committees. I was chairman of one of them. This is a very slippery slope. We wasted a lot of money on the old high school. We wasted a great deal of money on the RES. It was, all these remedial things, we have to patch it up to keep it going. That does not work, folks, and believe me, once you start spending this money, there's no stopping until you come up with a long-range plan. I know we are not going to develop a long-range plan right now. And I know even if we did, as Stephanie said, it can't be implemented for two or three years. But I think you should seriously consider, consider moving out tomorrow. Somebody said you can't move out tomorrow, you could start moving out tomorrow. There are vacant properties in this town. We've got, CMCA is going to be vacant sometime soon. We've got the dealership, the old automobile dealership is sitting, there's a lot of square footage in that building. And we also have Hoboken Gardens. There are plenty of, it's not like there are no places which is for sale. There's, there's no shortage of places where we could move. And I think we should consider doing that right now and not spend any money on that old building. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
It's been a while since Dave Jackson and I have been on the same side of the same issue, so this is, this is... It's been a while since Dave Jackson and I have been on the same side of the same issue. And I'm totally with Dave. I think the answer is, the fast, the most expedient, immediate thing you could do is to find another place to put the library for a while. Whether you're going to rehab that building, add to it, build on it, or whether you're going to tear it down, doesn't matter. You're going to do one or the other. You absolutely are going to do one or the other. You know you want a bigger library. So you either got to add on to the existing one, fix the problems that are with the existing one and add on to it, or you're going to tear it down and build a new one. I think we're all pretty much in agreement that it's going to be there. So it's, it's not, well, well, it's going to be someplace else, we'll build some library. But I think everybody is convinced right now that we should try our damnedest to make it work there. So, whether you, which way you do, you're going to, you need to get out of that building right now. Go, find a place.
Ask a question, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
What, what would that look like? What would that look like for us? What would that look like for the town? Would, do we vote on it? Do we say, yes, tomorrow? And start finding some places? What does that look like? Because I'm not opposed to that.
We budgeted...
We got to put it in a safe place.
We budgeted money to, for repair of that building. We budgeted, and I can't remember what, how much we have and we put aside for a repair that could go into leasing a space, you know, instead of, instead of doing those repairs. You know, the question is, is, you know, what, where, as Dave mentioned, there are several locations. There's some that are, have not been explored yet. But the, you know, the question is, do we spend forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars on Band-Aids, as Dave said, on that building? Or do we put that money into doing what, if everybody, if everybody is in the, on the same, if most everybody's on the same page, that the existing building has to go in some form, or it has to have major renovations, one or the other. Either one of those, you can't have the library working there at the same time. Then you have to move the library. Then, you know, the question, the question is, you know, are we ready to get that? I mean, the two groups haven't had a chance to sit down and talk about this. This is the first time they've had a chance to talk about it. Is, are we ready to do that now or do you want to do that at a, another meeting? You know, are you ready to do that now?
Yeah, what we could do, and I'm just throwing this out as an idea, we could direct the town manager to explore alternative locations. And what the, the cost would be, where would we find the money, you know, if we were to lease a space for, and it'd have to be more than just a year.
And mechanics in place to use those repair costs for, kind of, Rick was kind of alluding to that, so we don't necessarily have to find the money.
I don't think it would be enough.
It, well, that may not be enough.
And he's giving me the nod.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, probably wouldn't be enough, but, you know, if we need to, we could call another town meeting to do that.
It would be within the library budget.
Yeah, well...
As long as we didn't have to take from outside of the library budget.
You know, if the money isn't enough in the library budget to do that. The thing is, you know, we don't have enough information to make a sound choice on what our alternatives are.
Well, I think it would be well worth looking into what the alternatives are and how much it would cost us to move our staff someplace else. I mean, because not only do we have to rent a place, but it's not cheap to move that many books. And to have all the equipment. You're going to have to move all your bookcases, then you're going to have to move all your books and we're going to have to move it back. Or move it someplace else.
And, and it just occurred to me, we also lose the fiber optic. But that's a minor, depends on where we go, that's a secondary.
Three hours to move thousand books to the RES, to the R, MRC.
But, but in, you know, on the other side of that, Ann Press did a lot of, got them all in boxes. Moving boxes is a lot easier than moving unboxed books.
I just think you're not pocketing huge sums of money to move the books.
I don't, yeah. Ken?
I want to make a couple of comments about, somebody asked, I think it might have been Stevie, asked about if we were going to do the mold testing in the wall, see if mold is in the walls. And quite honestly, I think the only way we do that testing is if we are prepared, if it comes back positive, to leave the building. Because remediating mold in the walls is not something not worth spending money on. Secondly, the, the conversation came up, talking about, well, what do we do with that building? Do we, do we rehab it or do we renovate it or whatever? I think the engineering report was pretty clear to me that that foundation cannot support anything more than is there right now. So I think any major renovation or addition to that building is not a wise use of the town's funds. If we want to, if we decided all we want to do is fix it up, we could spend an awful lot of money doing that, fixing it up and not making it any bigger than it is. But I don't think we can make it any bigger than it is right now based on the engineering report, my opinion.
Yeah. Well, the engineering report said they couldn't evaluate because they didn't have the designs for it and the footings.
They made a statement that their observation of the foundation was...
Well, you've got to be safe. You've got to be safe and say it doesn't.
So, we're mixing, we're mixing finances, emotion and science all in this conversation. And the question is, does this board go and make a deal with the, with the former car dealership on Route One? Hang on, which has its own moisture problems, by the way. You drive past that and it's a swimming pool inside. But, or do we bring in the, do we have conversations with the committee, library committee in order to figure that out? It seems to me that we should not go charging around making, you know, these, you're going to be here for three years without, without input from them. And if it means, and I think that we're being, we're being a little bit too inclusive. I think that it's a conversation that has to happen sooner than later. So if we have a meeting where there's only four of us and maybe one can Skype in or something, I think that's both good faith effort and it's what needs to be done.
But, but as it's been pointed out, the building, the physical structure is our responsibility.
Oh, I get that, but...
And we are the ones that, you know, as you said, we're the ones that have to be aware of what we're putting our employees into.
Right.
You know, which I would draw is that, you know, we could make that decision. We're, we're the ones that are going to have to finance it.
We can make the decision, for instance, to get out of there just as soon as possible. But what doesn't make any sense to me is that if it comes down to two different properties, us making that, you know, go with this probably versus that.
We aren't even there yet. What we're doing...
That's what we're charging the town manager to do is come up.
Is to identify places that might be appropriate. I mean, I think that's the only logical step for me right now. I mean, other than, I mean, like I said, I still would like to see everything out of that second floor. The engineering report to me says that whoever cut those trusses had no idea what they were doing. So I really think that's a matter of health and safety. That's a personal opinion. I wrote all you guys because I feel very strongly about that. But it comes down to the five of us making a decision about what we're going to do next with that building. And I think it's smart of the five of us to make the big decision. Are we going to continue to pour money into this building after we got this report? Or are we going to say, no, we are not going to, and this is how we're going to start to move forward? And that's a decision the five of us have to make. Now, when we get down to actually making decisions about how we want to move forward, then yes, it is important that we make sure that the library committee and the librarian are involved in that. But we have to decide how strongly we feel about this. And I know where I stand, I don't know where other people stand. But I am truly very, very concerned about our employees there and the patrons of the library. We invite children into that building two or three times a week. And if we do that mold test, which unfortunately seems like something we probably need to do, if we do that mold test and find out that there's really scary stuff in there, and I know the whole gambit because I have, I have the thousand-dollar report from my house from this year. And when it comes up in that really far red area on the end, you move out the next day, which is what I did and why I've been living in a hotel since March. So, I, I know too much about that and I don't think it's appropriate for us to continue to ask people to use this as a public building when we don't know what's going on and we don't seem to have anything as our next step.
Well, I think we do, you can.
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm going to move that we direct the town manager to explore alternative locations for the library in the short term, and report back to both this board and to the library committee by the next select board meeting.
August 10th.
And, I'll see if anybody seconds that, and then we can talk about it.
Seconded.
I think this allows us to explore the opportunities, see what's out there, and see what the cost might be. It sounds, and it sounds like from all the comments that the, the, this, the current building is not good along for this world, at least not without major work. And, if we can get out of it and find some temporary space, and, and, and then not put any more money into that building, and then the long-term plan works, we can work on that. I think reporting back to both the select board, which has the responsibility for the building, and the library committee is going to be important, because the library committee is going to have some input on the programmatic layout of any temporary space that's going to be used.
It would literally let us breathe easy. I've got asthma. I take medication twice a day. I know all about it.
That's the rationale behind the motion.
Okay, we've had the motion. Rick, you-
You know, I think you've heard from the conversation here tonight that there's been a lot of places where people on both sides of this question have disagreed pretty vehemently over the past year. I think that with the result of that report, and, the reports, but a result of the work that we've done, you're starting to see a place where people are starting to figure out where they can agree. And, if we can solve that piece of the puzzle, and we can get to the, to the next step is, okay, the, the harder issues are going to be about size and space and all of that stuff. But, if, if the general consensus has gotten to the point where, you know what? The library's going to exist on the current site, and the existing building isn't going to work on that current site, then, if the consensus in the community, and I think you'll, we'll hear from that as we move forward, whether, whether we're right in that, that view or wrong in that view. But, if that, if the general consensus is, the people on both sides of the issue agree with that, that the existing site can work, existing building can't, then let's fix it. And, you know, then maybe the, the, the approach is to say, let's stop fighting about this piece, and let's just get the building, let's move out of there, find a temporary space, and go on to the next question, which is the question of size, and then, you know, how much is it going to cost? But, if we've saw, if we've settled the, the location, and, you know, is that building going to work question, and if everybody gets comfortable with, you know, the fact that the, the build, if we're going to continue to use that site, that building can't work on it, then, you know, we can, we can move to the next step.
Okay.
Come to that conclusion that the building can't, is the next question. The building won't work whether or not the site is the right site or not.
Right.
So, so the first question is to go, and then we'll, you know, get to the site if we want.
I have some discussion.
Wicked new at this stuff, and you guys are going to tear me apart. I don't want to wait until the next month. I say, give it a week, and we have a special meeting with the library committee. Rick, you can make three phone calls to three different places. Ken would have to Skype in. It would be on the 20th. Can't go for the week afterwards, when we would normally have the second one, because Ken and Bill would be out. But, I'd, I'd say not wait a month, go for a week, and have another meeting. That's my two cents. You can tell me why I'm wrong.
My only question would be, I'd ask Rick, is that enough time?
There, there's, as, as you guys know, I spent a lot of time working on this. There are, there are several other kind of moving pieces that, that may take longer than a week to kind of nail down. I, I mean, I appreciate, I think there is an urgency, and I, you know, the faster we can move on this, the better. But, I'd rather be correct than quick. You know, I make sure we've covered all of the bases, and I think there's some other pieces that I, I couldn't get that done in a week.
What do you anticipate lacking in a week?
There, there's some, there's some moving real estate pieces that are moving around, and, you know, I, I, I can't nail that down in a week.
I guess I didn't understand that. Moving real estate pieces?
There, there's, there's a, there's a, there's several properties that are potentially in play, that could be potential locations for a, a library, and I can't possibly nail those down in a week.
So, so then you would come to the, the meeting, and you would not know whether they were viable options?
Right. I have, I hadn't had a chance to fully look at those, those locations.
There has to be some negotiation involved as well, in all likelihood.
Right. As much as I'd like to, I wish I could say, yes, I can come back in a week and get this done, because I think it's important to get it done.
Well, I'm not saying have it be done. I'm just saying in a week, be able to say, CMCA said, yes, and it would cost this much. This place said, no. This place said, yes, and it would cost this much. This is as much as I've got right now. You know, chew on it, if we can go from there. Maybe, maybe it would be clear in a week, maybe it wouldn't be. But, if we continue to push it, even to allow you as much time, that's, that's possibly a couple more days where you had all the information, and that's a couple of days where they're continuing to work in an unsafe place.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think a week is enough time, as much as I'd like to say, I, I mean, I'd like to say we can get it done. I think we could potentially be turning, not complete and thorough in our look at some-
You've got to remember, too, that if we're, we're looking for someplace temporary, but temporary may be two years. And, you don't want to jump into someplace that's, that's going to be, after two months, you're going to realize that this is the wrong place, and we've got to do it again. So, I think, I think it's, makes sense to, I mean, I, I appreciate the, the urgency, but I think we want to make sure that we make the decision the right way.
Okay. The beauty of reporting back to us on the 10th is, the library committee will be meeting on the 12th. So, effectively, it is a report of both.
And, by all means, if you have information that you can email out to all of us a week ahead of time, so much the better, but, yeah.
Information, does that mean that the workers are there, and the work that's been scheduled, and stuff will stop until this decision is made?
I wasn't aware of anybody working on the-
No, I didn't know what, I didn't know where you were with contractors and different people doing it.
I have some people contracted to, to just patch up the front entrance.
The front entrance and the door.
And, that work will be done shortly.
That's already been started.
Right, but that was already in the process.
Is there some remedy for the mold in the short term? Or, we decided to give anyone the, we're confused on that issue, on that-
The time it'd take to get a report, probably the same, you know, you know, to do it the right way, we would have to put out a request for proposal.
No, CES, part of, part, part of the, the work that CES, when they did this, we pulled out the remold, the mold testing to keep us in budget. The next step was, do we need to do the mold, the air quality testing, which is about five thousand dollars more, between three and five thousand dollars? And, the recommendation from them is, from CES, the people that we'd be paying the money to do the testing is, you know, don't, you, don't spend the money. We know there's, there's some amount of mold there. It's obvious, just, just-
I mean, I think at this point, if we decided tonight to do mold remediation, they'd probably show up about the time we were moving out to move to the temporary quarters to do it. So, it doesn't seem like this is what we're doing.
It'll probably take, it would probably take two to three weeks to get somebody in to do it, and then it would take at least another week to two weeks to get a report back.
Minimum.
Right. I mean, because something is this, this extensive. I mean, with my house, it took us seven days, and only because there was screaming involved on my part and a few other peoples. And then, we got a preliminary report back four days later. We didn't get a written report for another three or four days after that. And, that's for a residential situation.
If Rick comes back next month and says there are no viable alternatives, other than building a temporary structure, then we might have to rethink that and say, well, if we're going to have to, if we have to be in here for four to six months, then we'll have to, we'll revisit that issue. But, if, at this point, if we're going to move forward with all speed to look for another location, then it seems-
One thing I would ask is that, if, if anybody has any ideas about additional space that has not been mentioned, please let me know, because people have, people often have good ideas that we haven't, we haven't seen or discovered yet that, that are, that are out there.
I think you already have one.
What, what, I mean, it's random, but the middle school, I mean, you know, I mean, I know that-
Oh, God. Oh, that would be bad. That would be very, very bad.
It is the Rockford Public Library.
Now, I know what, what I look like when they say that.
Hey, it wouldn't, we probably wouldn't have to pay that much in rent.
Okay. All right. We have the motion on the floor, and it has been seconded to direct the town manager to report back to us with alternatives, and hopefully some cost estimates at our next meeting. Do we have any other pressing discussion that we want to do before we take the vote? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed?
I'd like it done quicker.
Okay, we've got to take a roll call on this one, because it's not unanimous. I'm going to call for the vote, yes or no. Cassas?
Nope.
Tracy?
Four.
Ken?
Four. Far, Parker.
Chapman, four. It's, the vote is four in favor, one opposed, being Owen, so. With that, let's move on to our next item here.
Mr. Chairman, could we take a five-minute break, do you think? It's 9:30.
Well, it's 9:30, yes, please.
Just to stretch your legs and get a drink of water or something.
Oh, and let everybody leave. No, we don't want everybody to leave. Thank you all.
Oh, I got a few, yeah.
Oh, good.
There are some things I'm good at. Oh, my database. Trying to find out the size of Prism, of the studio at Prism.
Oh, out in the back? Very small, very small. It's two-story. I don't think, I don't think the first floor is even this size.
Really?
Yeah. Out, out in behind Prism glass?
Yeah.
Where Brinkley Holy moved into most recently, right next door.
It used to be...
That place, they've had that on the market for years.
Right, so it's been, it's been rented to various people. And the other one is that professional office up on Old County Road, right up at the, up the hill. There's a professional office that's between Old County and Route One.
Yeah, it had been an eyeglass place.
It says, it says there's sixteen offices in it.
Yeah.
So I'm like, sixteen offices, at least sixteen rooms?
Is it vacant?
Uh, it looked like it was. I didn't look and check.
Yeah, there was an, there was a ophthalmologist in there.
Yeah, eye doctors, what I can think of.
Okay.
Forty, thirty-four Old County.
Mm-hmm. The question is, okay, are we, are we ready? Okay.
Jeff leave?
Yes, Jeff is off. We're on? Okay. Welcome back, folks. Mr. Parker has had to leave. His cold is getting worse, so he has gone home. The next item we have here is to determine when we want to have committees come in and visit us. I provided everybody with a list of the ones that had been in, in, over the past year. Ad hoc, having come in on, the ad hoc water quality, November twenty-fourth, twenty-fourteen, and we'll probably want to have them back again. That was a special. We had a workshop that night.
Right.
Because it does take some time for their findings. The pathways committee came in in December. Ken has already indicated to me that that would probably be an optimal time for them as well, given the work that they're doing on their comprehensive sidewalk plan for Rockport. The cemetery committee came in in May, and we have a workshop scheduled for September, so I would think we can leave that in a bounce. The library committee, we're in in July of last year, and we have a workshop already scheduled with them, so I think that's moving ahead on its own plan, our own pace. Parks Committee was in in April of this year. This leaves up the conservation commission, which Ken suggested we have in at December. The harbor committee, I spoke to Jeff before he left. He's suggesting for them September because that would be a wrap-up for the season. The opera house committee also was Jeff, and he suggested November or December after the work is done here for the building. Skipping back to the investment committee, I sort of got the sense that, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh. The investment committee hasn't really been in to see us. They meet quarterly. They are having the report from Bar Harbor Trust at the September meeting. I could ask that someone from them come in, say at the October meeting, just to bring us up to date on what the, how the investment goals are going, if nobody has an objection.
Makes sense.
Yep. Ordinance review committee, now, we typically need to have a work session with them to set the, or at least solicit ideas for ordinance changes. In the past, we've usually had that sort of in September, but as a workshop.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best idea, is to do that as a workshop in September.
Okay.
Could push to October if we had to, but I think there's some, some things, some, one of the issues that came up earlier tonight, we certainly probably want to bring forward.
Yeah, I was going to say, considering that conversation, we want to get to that sooner than later.
Okay, okay. And that leaves the recreation committee. Which is not your responsibility anymore. Why are you rolling my eyes?
Because I feel sorry for the person that's trying to make that happen.
So I need to put together a committee and then have them present something?
Well, there's three people. That's the problem, is that they have a quorum if you can get the three of them in one room.
Yeah, and we've also had volunteers from several other...
Two or volunteers, two or three, yeah.
Penn Bay Medical Center wants to have some involvement, the Midcoast Recreation, Aldemir Farms, and I want to say there was a four.
Was it the Y?
I think it was three.
No, that's right. Yeah, I think it was just the three. You're right.
I was, I was thinking tonight, and I didn't want to mention it, when they were in front of us taking their kudos, but maybe the Keep Rockport Beautiful people would be interested in having a representative there.
I have a question on that. If I was to approach some people to try to get more committee members, are you saying that I can have a representative from MRC?
Well, that's, well, but we talked about that. Yeah, we haven't made a decision on that. We never made a final decision.
Representation, and I fully support that, but what happens if their tenants are...
Well, we talked about was that maybe the entity could have somebody on that committee, right? So Aldemir says, we are going to have one of our employees be a representative, but if that employee were to leave our employ, it would go to, they would name another employee, rather than it be Joe. No, it's not Joe, it's Aldemir Farms' seat.
Representative.
Right. And we talked about it, but we kind of hadn't decided how to move forward with that.
And they get a voting?
Well, that's, we, that's part of the question of how to make that happen, and what we're comfortable with.
In a perfect world, it's best to name people to the committee, but especially given this situation where we're having trouble, then that's...
I would, I would venture to guess that conflict of interest might be something that would come up with people that are voting, that actively represent a for or even a non-for-profit organization. I'm just curious about that, if anyone has thoughts.
I mean, there's provisions in the charter for that. They, they might have to, if there were issues that came up, that they would have to abstain for cause. There are procedures in the charter to handle that.
Where did you all leave it in your last discussion?
I think we left it with, we think it's a really good idea, but we haven't made any...
Well, I think in terms of somebody from out of town being on an advisory committee, I think we basically agreed, I don't know that we took a vote on it, but we agreed that it would be acceptable if that person had expertise to bring to the committee. For example, if there was somebody that worked at MRC that was heavily involved in recreational programs, but didn't live in Rockport, but had an interest in serving.
But not on your quasi-judicials.
Not on the quasi-judicials, still.
That's on your stand.
On, on the advisory committees. And I think we also sort of agree that we would want to have at least a majority of members of the committee be Rockport residents.
Well, but we do, we can visit the whole idea of having them be non-voting members.
Yeah.
Having them be representatives, like we do with town employees, that are members of committees but are not voting members of committees. I mean, that is another way of, of dealing with that, of being able to name somebody, have them be able to participate and, and add whatever it is they bring from wherever they bring it, but not have them be a voting member. But then you still need five, you still need five members so you can make a quorum.
As far as the, those representatives, work with Rick, because he's had the contacts with them.
And one quick clerical thing, if, if we have eight people, but only four of them are voting people, where the heck was I going with that?
The, what's the quorum?
What's the quorum look like?
Well, one issue I think with the recreation committee is they probably don't have bylaws yet.
Yeah.
Not new ones, because of Parks and Recreation. So they haven't, there's no new mission statement.
Cut and paste Parks and put Rick.
I put, I, I sent you that to you, so when you get your town email, you'll have the template.
You don't have town email yet?
I... You have it. One, I suck because I'm sometimes weird like that. And then I went to go do it, and I typed in the URL that was at the top, HTTP slash colon. Put it all in there, and it wasn't allowing me to have access even to a place to do the password and login. And when I had called that day, Stacy was out, and then that's where it goes into me sucking, is I wasn't on her the next day or the day after.
Yeah, we've, yeah, just, we've had a difficult week, week and a half here.
Understandable, for sure.
So, but you should, do you have a laptop, or you do it on the desktop?
I have a laptop.
So if you brought it in, she can, brought the laptop in, she can make sure you're set up.
I can do it through my phone. Do you have, you've got a smartphone?
Yep, yep, you can do it there, too.
If you have an iPhone, I can show you how to do it. Because I've got it set up on here.
Okay.
Yes, I will take care of that within the next two business days.
Yeah, but you really need to get on to that, just for security. That way we have all your business-related emails trapped, so in case there's a question. Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't know if you ever addressed capital improvements committee and when they should present. Maybe I just overlooked it.
Uh, I guess because I didn't write it down.
Right.
And, but that is, we're, until we get the improvement plan, asset plan approved, there's no point in trying to bring them in. They are more, well, they're sort of a permanent committee, but they are at our beck and call.
And they're only quarterly?
No, they're whenever we need.
Right. They come when we set up new policy and say, look at this, or when we ask them to review, to move things forward.
Working on their last body of work now.
Right. So worst, yeah, we still haven't fixed everything. They told us we needed to fix last time.
But we making progress?
Oh, we're making great progress.
Okay. Let's move ahead. Having the Annual Freedom of Access Act briefing, this is for committee members and town staff. We've checked with the town attorney. She is available on August twenty-seventh, seven PM, at the town office. And we've been doing this for a number of years, and this is always good for people who have just been renominated to committees or have been appointed to committees since last June.
Can I ask that people get invited now, rather than two days before the event? Because last year it happened about two days before, and like, my husband was unable to go because it was too late for him to put it in his schedule. So if we've made this date, then let's make sure everybody in every committee gets invited as quickly as possible, so that...
Yeah, you know, send it out to all of them, but to emphasize those people who have been, who have not had the briefing before.
Or who's on a quasi-judicial board. They need to make sure they re-up.
Well, we have a new member on the library committee. It'd be really important for...
Well, any of our, any of our elected committees and our quasi-judicial, so budget, library, ZBA, planning, and Board of Assessment Review.
Is it seven PM? Is that the correct time?
Yes.
Okay. I just remember in the past, it was earlier.
No, no, it's, it's seven PM. That's the one that works best, so. And, you know, if, if we want weekend attend, you know, if you go to the MMA's briefing, you get it then. But, you know, if you're not going to be able to get to an MMA session...
She's signed up.
I'm planning on doing the July twenty-ninth MMA meeting. I'm totally planning on that. I have no problem coming to this one as well, but if it's the redundant...
You will get the whole thing, and you'll get a lot more, so.
Yeah, the MMA will be very worthwhile for you.
Yeah, so, okay. We need to schedule the workshop. Well, I think we do. We were provided with the capital improvement plan, capital improvement policy, and the credit card policy. This is for town credit cards, not for separate credit cards.
We need to say that, too, for, it's like employee use.
Employee use.
Not just credit card policy, but employee use.
Yeah. I'm going to assume that we, we want to hold a workshop to do the final wordsmithing of this. Rick, is there an urgency associated with these? Yes, ma'am.
Capital improvement policy is the one that you would actually vote on as a select for.
Yes.
The plan would be approved, much like you would approve a budget.
Mm-hmm, right.
And this was just to give you an example of what it might look like.
Right.
And since doing this, I've also thought I probably should add a summary page.
Okay.
So that you can see...
Oh, that'd be nice.
An executive summary.
Yeah.
And so, and there are other things that you might want to see in here, but I wanted to give you an idea of what it might look like.
Mm-hmm.
I looked through the policy, and it, I remember the last time we had trouble because there was CIP and CIPP and all that kind of stuff, and that seems to have been cleaned up pretty nicely.
Well, what I figured out is we were trying to do too much all at one time.
Right. But most of it looks pretty good to me, and I know we're not going to talk about it tonight. The only question I had was in the, and on the very first page, we talk about two point one capital asset and two point two capital infrastructure. Capital asset, it gives a definition of capital asset, but the second one doesn't really give a definition of capital infrastructure. It talks about expenses for capital infrastructure, but doesn't give a definition of it.
Oh.
See what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
The capital asset is an item that has a valuable, capital infrastructure is any expenditure for physical improvements, and I don't think there's a, we have to think about that a little bit. But that was the only, that was the only area that I really identified as needing some work, and I don't necessarily know what the answer is right now, but...
This is kind of a priority for us to get done, so that we can start the, the plan. You have to do the policy first, so that then we can start working on the plan.
Okay.
And been kicking it around, and then we got into budget, and so we, it's kind of fell off our, off our horizon. It would be nice to get this one done, and...
But my sense on this one is it's not that far from being ready.
I think you just need another workshop to kind of...
Bless it.
But also spend some time, you know, pointing out things like that. If you do that now, you can...
I mean, would it, I mean, because we've got lots of meetings going on, is it worth it to just say that we send in our thoughts to everybody and then put it on the agenda for our August meeting to bless? I mean, I don't know how many changes we need to do.
Ken's not going to be here, and he's our chief wordsmith.
Well, everybody else is perfectly capable.
I mean, I, I just, I didn't find anything major in it. I have to say, I didn't go through with a fine-tooth comb. I didn't have time this weekend, because I was moving books.
So if you go through with a fine-tooth comb and then send in those comments to me, send them in to Ginny and I, and, you know...
Yeah, I think we, sending them to you and Ginny is right. I think we can't send it to the whole board, because that becomes a meeting in absentia or whatever, so.
Well, you can send your comments to everybody.
Discuss it.
But we cannot respond to everybody.
So if you just send it, send it to everybody, including Ginny and I, but don't make it a point not to comment to each other.
Yeah. If we, if you want to comment back on it, we comment just to Ken and just to Ginny and Rick. Then you've excluded the rest of us, and it's not a conversation.
And can, can someone give me a kind of, I would like to have your comments by X date?
Two weeks before the next meeting.
The twenty-seventh of July.
If we approve this at the August meeting, is that enough time for you guys?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Comments by July twenty-seventh.
I don't think it's that far, quite honestly.
Yeah, I didn't feel like there was any major, I didn't, Lori didn't go, oh, what, huh? I'm more of when, yeah, 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 so.
I've promised a lot of this stuff lately, but I haven't done much of it.
The plan, we don't have to look at. So what about the policy?
The credit card policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to not ask critical, is that this, this one we've had on our plate for a long time.
I had several questions on that one.
Credit card policy, you probably, we haven't discussed that, and you may want to take some time to do that one.
I guess, I guess I would ask the question on the urgency on that. I mean, you currently have, employees have credit cards now, right, and they're using them. Is it going all right?
Well, I mean, there's places where we have hiccups. We, we need something, but it, this one isn't critical, given everything you have on your plate right now. This one is, it's not like we're, we have major problems. The capital improvement policy is the one that we need to get moving on, because that, we've got to be working on this so that when we get into next year's budget cycle, as we get into the budget cycle, we have some background to help with that budget. The credit card policy, I, given everything you have on your plate, if we didn't have this right away, that would be okay, I think. Don't you, Ginny?
Yeah.
Okay. But we have a homework assignment.
Well, we have a couple of homework assignments.
Yes, I know.
Because for those of us who didn't get you goals, we need that, to do that for you.
I was going to bring that up in a few minutes.
Goal rankings returned. That was on August third, whatever. I'm wondering if with the credit card policy, we can piggyback that on another workshop.
Well, okay. I wanted to point out that we sort of have in here on August eighteenth to, an executive session to discuss the town manager's goals. We have that starting, I think it says five. We could meet on this before that, and then move into the goals.
Rick, do you know what days you're going to be out in August?
Yes, that's on the schedule.
Yeah, you're going to be gone for your NIMI, the twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth. That's the only thing that I have in the summer. You were, you know, I know you keep talking about motor, motor vessel.
Yeah, I, I have some dates, but they're either Fridays or Mondays.
Listen, if we already have a meeting scheduled, I can't imagine that we would need to spend.
Were you alluding to, we would meet at like four P M. before the executive session?
No.
On that date, or meeting days before?
We start at five, go through this, and then when we're done with this. Uh, this is Tuesday.
Tuesday the eighteenth.
I, I have vacation either that week or the week before, I'm thinking it's the week before.
The week before is when Rick's gonna be out.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, um.
So that works for me to add credit card to the eighteenth?
Okay.
Credit card.
Just be at the town office at five P M.
Yep, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
With your notes on the credit card policy.
Follow. I mean, again, it doesn't hurt you, if you've got some things that you think we should be addressing, it'll help speed up the process. If you're reading through it and you think.
Comments now.
Give you the comments ahead of time, we can then address them and maybe solve them before we get to that meeting.
And have a new, new version issued, um, by our select board meeting on the tenth. So, okay, we got that. Sorry, I'm writing. Okay, um, the next item. We, in our, again, in our goals workshop, we identified the town websites as being a fairly critical nature. Did we wanna try to schedule a workshop now or hold off as everything else sort of flows by us? And then come back and address this once these other issues have been sort of moved along, Owen?
Would it make any sense to schedule that one with John Beeman considering his work on rockportmaine.com?
This would be a open to the public.
Okay, yep.
Anybody that, you know, key player.
There are certain people that have asked to be invited, so I would presume.
And my question, I guess we had talked at one point about perhaps establishing a, maybe even a standing committee, I think Jeff talked about that as a technology and maybe information committee, and I wonder if we might wanna think about establishing that committee and let them get their hands around it cause they'll be able to do a lot.
Well, I mean, we need to come out with a mission statement, we need to be very clear about what we expect in a timeframe. I mean, I do think we're gonna need to schedule a workshop to do so, um, and I think sooner the better because we're gonna wanna put things in the budget for next year potentially. So, we're gonna have to have those numbers by December so that they can get worked into December, January, they need to work those into next year's budget. So, uh, unfortunately, we don't spend enough time together, we need to schedule another workshop. And the only thing, I don't, I don't, I'm thinking one of the second.
They, they, they tend to taper off as we get into, uh, through October. Yes, this carries into October.
September?
We're gonna have a library one sometime in September.
I'd like to try to keep some of that open, you know, you know, for urgent issues.
Well, how about the very beginning of September? The first, second, third?
I've got pathways on the second.
Yeah, yeah.
If it was earlier, I can do, if we weren't scheduled at five.
The first or the third then?
We could do the first or the third.
What are you looking at, September?
September.
First or third?
I mean, but I can do the second if you schedule the meeting before seven.
No, 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 no.
All the workshops, I mean, we've done workshops at five, so.
Yeah, but it's really, I, I have to say, from a work standpoint, it's been really hard for me to come to some of those earlier ones, especially lately.
The third I'm planning on taking off.
Okay.
The first.
Yep.
Okay, we're, we're set, um, what time do we wanna do it on the first? The five P M.?
Five will work for me. Tech workshop.
Richard's in the room?
Yep.
Yeah, town office. And, um, Rick, do you have a list of people? I know that Jan Rosenbaum had asked to be involved in that when we finished with.
I don't have a formal list, no.
I mean, John Beeman, obviously, uh, Jan Rosenbaum had asked during budget season. Trying to think, there was somebody else who came up and asked at one of the meetings about technology. But you may wanna send it out to the budget committee. I mean, I would think that there were a couple of people who had things to say when we were talking about, um, uh, at least websites, who might be interested in being more involved, and maybe it was somebody else on budget. I'm beginning to think it's somebody else.
Peter, was it Peter?
John Johnson.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, I, I just, Jan's the only one that like sticks in my head, but I would.
Well, John was there too, so.
And John, well, John's on, yeah.
Kim, Kim Slosson, anyone remember that name?
Yeah.
He was there at the.
Oh, yeah, Kim, actually, Kim wanted to be involved in the, in the fiber optic stuff.
But he doesn't, is he smart, does he live in town?
Yes, oh, yeah, he's up on Mount Pleasant.
Yep, oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Yep. He's a smart guy, he knows.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the slaw man.
I'm friends with him on Facebook, I'll throw it out there and just let him know that we're talking about it.
Okay, so we're set for September one.
September first at five o'clock at the town office for a website slash, slash technology workshop.
Yep, okay.
We're getting close.
All right. Now we come to the question on committee liaisons, and you were trying to get.
I never got Ted to answer me back.
Answer anything.
My kid Ted.
He didn't show up for.
And then he didn't show up for a meeting last week, well, nobody showed up, I don't know what the thing was.
And they're saying that it's this week, somebody said.
Right, but it's still Wednesday, so I still can't make it.
Yeah.
And I, I, I don't know. If I was able to go and look at him and ask him, maybe I could get something, but I can't, I can't be there.
Okay.
Well, I guess, I mean, I'm the one with a short list here, so I guess it's tag I'm it.
Can you make, can you make Wednesday mornings?
Most of the time, probably, what is it, Wednesday at eight?
Wednesday at eight, you're heading out of town.
Well, I'll be here until late afternoon on Wednesday, so I probably can try to be there at eight on Wednesday.
Hopefully they're meeting.
If anybody else shows up.
Yeah, the question is, is will anybody else show up?
Thing is, I guess Bob Kennedy was quite upset because he was the only one who showed up, and, and you know, he's the one who's volunteering his time and then putting in a huge amount of work for the town, and you can't afford to.
Mm-hmm, okay. That then has been handled.
Oh, are we timed?
Need to go to wastewater.
I move to close as board, the select board, and move into being wastewater commissioners.
Second.
Moving second, hearing no discussion, all in favor, that's unanimous.
I move to commit the May twenty fifteen wastewater user debt fees totaling twenty-four thousand, two hundred and six dollars and ten cents to the treasurer for collection.
Second.
It's moved in second, and any discussion? Hearing?
I have a question.
Yep.
What, what, um, why can't the hospital pay their bill?
They do.
They do, is it, they're just, the rolling basis, just the weight, cause I was trying to talk this through with my wife, they seem to be the ten thousand. I circled that they were, I thought there was a shortlist of.
Yeah, the shortlist, that's the, the.
Businesses.
The monthly business commercial list, but if you look at the spreadsheet that Ginny provided with the packet, page three or four, about a, oh, a third of the way down the page, you'll see that they are current. The only thing they have, ten thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars, is all current.
Okay.
And that's what we, see, they, they, they pay it, you know, they're, they're very prompt and good about it, they, yep.
The one that we have the issue with is the country and properties.
Yeah. And I did talk with Ginny about that.
Well, then we don't need to talk about it tonight.
Well, you know, it's basically, you'll go ahead, Ginny.
A, a lot of times, um, businesses that get most of their income in the summer months won't pay some of their wastewater bills until the summer months come upon them and their, their revenues start. I think you'll see that change.
Okay, well, that makes sense, but it looked like it hadn't been paid for quite a while.
But we do have several that we have put weens on their property.
Yes, they are not one of them.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We had twelve last November, four of them either have or will be discharged, meaning they've paid off what is owed. And I will be at the end of this month looking again to see who we are going to send notices to. List generally starts out at around fifty or so.
And then they come in and pay, bring it up to date. But you'll also notice that there are some positive, uh, balances that we owe them money.
Some people set up their accounts so that they're paid ahead.
Yeah.
They just put a certain amount of money. Main water, and it just comes off as their bill.
So, so we have the motion on table, all in favor of placing commitment? That is unanimous. Our next item here is, actually, it's, it's a suggestion from Rick to waive the connection fees for Fresh Off the Farm and Rockport Steel.
Yes, we, we had a number of discussions internally with the team that's working on the, um, that extension, you know, with the past six months, and one of the discussions was from, with native Woodard and Curran, is that this project had gotten so difficult and so much of a problem for the, particularly for Fresh Off the Farm, um, that it might be a goodwill gesture of the, on the part of the town to waive some of those connection fees. The conversation also went to the fact that, well, you couldn't really waive it for one and not for the other. So, our recommendation was to waive it for both. It with the idea that in order to, to get that done, they have to actually make the connection. It's not like you're gonna waive it, and so they cannot connect in and, and, um, collect that in three years' time. It's if they wanna connect now, they get, they get to connect now, and if you so chose, you could waive that connection fee. And I don't have a copy of the memo, and somehow it didn't make my packet, but you have a, you have a copy of the memo from Scott. Which would, you know.
So, I guess I'm trying to think this through, and we have a connection fee, the thousand dollars that any new user would pay. I mean, and that's per.
It's based on the equivalent user.
Right, right, but in this situation, it's a thousand dollars. And anybody who wants to connect, whether or not they've been paying, uh, for debt fee for the last twenty years or not, is asked to pay that thousand dollars fee. And then, uh, when we decided to build this new build out, we added the two thousand dollar fee in, in the thought that that kind of helped even things out for people who have been paying for the last twenty years who wanna connect, they pay a thousand dollars, but people who are connecting to this new, uh, part since they haven't been paying the, the, the debt fees for the last how many years, that they would have that two thousand dollars on top of it. And even though I think it would be a nice gesture to do this, I mean, the reason why we did all of this and we are spending eight hundred thousand dollars of our money is for, basically for Fresh Off the Farm. I mean, Rockport Steel came in as well, but Fresh Off the Farm is the one that has come in time after time to ask us to help them out in their business. And so, I think that without them, we wouldn't have spent the eight hundred thousand dollars in bonds that we, we've spent. And so, it, it's kind of hard for me to, to equate it in my head of, of waiving fees that are really fees that are not onerous, that reflect what we have spent as a collective to, to put sewer in and acknowledging the fact that they haven't been paying debt, debt service like many other people have. So, that's kind of my thought on it, I, I'm, I'm kind of torn, but at the same time, it just doesn't quite seem right that we, as a collective, chose to, to, to spend almost a million dollars for just a couple of businesses. And, and we went into that knowing that we only had whatever, eleven potential connections. It kind of seems like this is a, a fair fee for what, what they're getting in exchange, which is that everybody is helping pay off the debt service to this. We're not asking them to pay the eight hundred thousand dollars, it's, it's spread throughout, in this instance, throughout the T I F. So that's, I, I, if somebody can come up with a better argument, uh, maybe I can be swayed, but I, I'm not too sure.
Well, you, you keep in mind also that part of the cost of it was offset by that C D B D., C D B G. grant from the state for job preservation at Fresh Off the Farm, which came in around a hundred and thirty-five thousand, I think it was.
No, I think it was more than two, two fifty.
Two hundred and fifty, okay.
So, but then the question would be.
It wasn't so much their contribution, it's because of their need that we were able to get this grant for job preservation that reduced the overall cost significantly.
I mean, but it's not costing us anything, it's costing these ratepayers to pay for this.
Yeah.
And I'm, I, that's how I look at it, and that's, I mean, it's great that we aren't paying as much, we'd be paying on a million dollars rather than eight hundred thousand dollars, but we're asking everybody to pitch in to do this. If they're actually using the service, if they're one of those eleven, that's what those fees were put together for was to make that be appropriate compared to people who've been paying for years.
Okay, yep.
So, two questions, one, was Rockport Steel also part of that job preservation? No, it was just Fresh Off the Farm.
Fresh Off the Farm.
And the other question is, you had mentioned there's like eleven, roughly eleven new connections, and we're asking.
Potential.
Potential.
Yes.
Have, is the feeling that you're getting that those other nine may start some grumblings about being charged a connection fee where these two were waived? Are we going on that slippery slope, so to speak? It's really based on, the, the waiving is based on the fact of the inconvenience factor that they were faced, they both, particularly Fresh Off the Farm was faced with for all summer long. And, um, you know, it was an, internally, the group felt like it was a, um, something that worth asking the board. I mean, you're the sewer commissioners, and that's why the decision's not ours, it's yours. To, to, to say, is, is that something you'd, you'd entertain or not? And if not, that's fine, that, you know, you're the sewer commissioners.
But one of our alternatives would be, you know, you, you sort of alluded to it, Tracy, that if, if they hook up between now and the end of the season, we'll waive it. But, you know, if they come in next year and wanna hook up, no, sorry, you know, you had your chance to do it cheap.
So, you're saying it should be a limited time offer?
A limited time offer, for everybody along that line. Cause that'd be the only way I think it'd be fee paid.
I think, yeah, I, I, I mean, I would be more inclined to do that, even though really, there's nobody else along that area that has a need for sewer, there's not even that many buildings on that strip there. I mean, this really are the only two places that, that have a, that have even the potential need.
A couple of things, first, certainly Fresh Off the Farm made a lot of noise about sewer, and it pushed us in that direction. But the extension was part of our overall goal of connecting the two sewer systems as well, so you have to keep that in mind. Uh, as far as the waiving the fees are concerned, I'm, I'm kind of looking at the two fees that are there, the thousand dollar equivalent user fee, and then the two thousand dollar new service fee differently. And I'd be in, I'd be more inclined to waive the thousand dollar fee for their inconvenience or whatever, but the two thousand dollar fee, to me, that's paying the other users of the system kind of catching up for what those other users have paid over the twenty, twenty-five years to maintain the system, so I'm less inclined to think about waiving that one. And I'd be more inclined to think about waiving just the so-called buy-in fee or the equivalent user one. So I, I don't know if that's something the rest of the board wants to think about, waiving, waiving a thousand and keeping the two thousand there. Cause that two thousand, I feel like that's almost a payment to the rest of the users of the system who've been maintaining it for a long time.
Part of that too, I mean, that's paperwork that our, that our, our office has to do. I mean, there's a reason why that thousand dollar fee exists to begin with.
Correct, but I think that the two thousand dollar fee is more particularly aimed at having them catch up from what the rest of the system has been paying for the long term. So I'm, like I say, that's, I, depending on what the rest of the board wants to do, I, but I, I, you know, there are costs involved and it's, it's, for me, it's keeping the rest of the users whole and things like that, and I'd be, my inclination would be to waive the thousand but keep the two thousand there.
And I, I would.
And I think, I agree with the time limited.
I, I would point out that Rockport Steel is not just the buildings that they have right there off Rockville. I, I would point out that Rockport Steel is not just the buildings that they have right there off Rockville Street. They also own the triangle across, along Route One. They own the old Dunn's Hearing Aid and they own the old squeaky, whatever it was called, place in there that's at the other end of that triangle.
The, the extension doesn't go down that far, does it?
It goes, I think they connect from that last one. Again, you, they own all three properties, they could run a sewer to it.
Yeah, and the pump station is right on that corner, right by there.
Yeah, I know, that's where the pump station is, but the feed comes down basically from where Sea Light Lane comes in.
Sea Light Lane is the end of the extension, for sure.
And we ran it deliberately there because that was the top, that was as high as we could go on the grade.
Right.
To get the.
To be able to gravity feed back to the pump. And that was a deliberate choice on our part. So. You, does anybody, you know, because, you know, we don't need to have a motion. Having no motion means that we aren't gonna approve it. Or we could have the motion and then vote it down, or we could have a motion and approve it.
I would probably vote, I don't know if this is how you're supposed to do it, but I would probably vote for Ken's waiving of the thousand dollar fee, but keeping the two thousand dollar fee for both entities.
Both or all the entities along the way?
We're not being asked for all the entities, are we?
We, well, wait a minute. It depends on why we're doing this. It doesn't sound like they're asking for anything.
No, they, they haven't.
They aren't asking for anything. It was, it was the Woodard and Curran and, and Rick and maybe.
Scott.
Scott, yeah, who's.
Scott, no.
Well, so, it, it's.
Scott, Scott just did the calculation.
Oh, okay.
So this is self-generated. So I, I'm just not inclined, I, I have to be honest, I'm not inclined to waive any of it. I, I don't really, I, I, I'm not inclined to.
And, you know, you, you got a good point there, too, in that, as Ken said, they were the ones that kept coming in and saying, we need it, we need it, we need it. And it's up and running and nobody's made a request to hook up.
Right, I thought this was a request to hook up.
Well, that was my next question, is are they making any preparations to hook up?
No.
That's the, the challenge.
So I, I just, I don't know, I'm not.
If they didn't hook up, we wouldn't be able to generate fees from them over time.
No, they have to pay debt service.
They have to pay debt service because they are along the line.
Right.
They don't have to pay the connection fee, they don't have to pay a monthly water usage fee because they're not putting anything in, but they have to pay the monthly debt service.
But in theory, if we waived the thousand dollar, that may, maybe be more inclined to connect and then over time, the, the town would generate that revenue back from their wastewater?
Not in any, no, not to offset it, because everybody else that connects would be paying the same service, that, that same monthly fee. Do we have any idea what it would cost them to hook up?
Oh, weren't we told it was gonna be like fifteen thousand dollars for them to build everything they needed to build?
I don't think it's that high.
I thought it was about, I thought they said that building a new septic system was like twenty to thirty thousand dollars and that it would be about half of that for them to connect, that it's, because it's significant amount of work to take it from where it is.
That may include these, these fees as well.
Oh, that's possible, I don't know about that. But I remember somebody saying like twelve to fifteen thousand dollars to connect. And the reason why I thought of that is because that's what it cost me to just repair my septic system. And I asked about the septic system and they said it was because of where it was and how it is that they couldn't just put a regular leach field in.
Right.
So, because they have a specific circumstance that has to be dealt with. But I, I just, I'm not inclined, I, I, I'm not, I'm not seeing a real reason in front of us to, to waive any fees at this point.
If there's no motion, you know, it's just, it's, I'm, I'm okay with it.
You, you raised the question, you raised the issue, and if they do come in and make a request, we can discuss it then with them here. Okay.
We good?
I'm fine with no action.
I move to adjourn as wastewater commissioners and reconvene a select board.
Second.
Move, and second, all in favor, it's unanimous, we are back as select board. Time for our liaison reports. And before we actually go into those, I sent out the consolidated goals list. There weren't that many on it.
We were all bad.
And we're all gonna rate them high, you know, worthy, low, and forty-six or forty-seven, forty-seven.
Forty-seven, yeah.
So.
Part of it was, is I tried to open it on my, on my iPad and it didn't open properly. There was no list and then I never remembered to go back and open it on my iPad.
The first page was blank. First page was just titles and then you had to go to like sheet three before you actually saw the goals.
Well, and there were only so many sheets I could open up on here. That's why I, but that's still an excuse, I'm sorry.
The second two, just the one sheet, the first sheet that I had it saved at, that was the only one that was of any importance.
It was still bad, I'm still wrong, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, send me an email tomorrow if you can't open it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work on that tomorrow's Tuesday, I should be able to work on that tomorrow.
I can probably drop it into something, you know, send you an RTF file or something like that, comma delimited, whatever. Okay. Liaison reports. We've already heard from the library committee and pretty much everything that they were discussing. They are holding their workshop two days after we hold ours, unless they decide they wanna get together earlier and move forward quicker. So you know more, you know now as much as I do about where they're going. I have to say, though, that their meeting, though it started out rocky, became very cordial. They're working together, so.
That is not what I got told at the, at the, at the, at the, at the book sale. I'm just saying, I was assaulted by a number of people after that, but.
Yep, okay.
Planning Board?
Yeah.
Planning Board is looking at Schooner Bay Taxi. I think we may have talked about this last month. It's going to ZBA because it needs a special exception. But they seem to be very happy with what's going on because it's all gonna happen in the building. There's gonna, all the, all the cars, all the, all the taxis will be parked indoors. The employees will park behind the building. So it looks like it's gonna be a win-win and that, that property's gonna get used, so that's a, that's a good deal.
I went by it today and it says sold.
Well, because.
I've been seeing Schooner Bay vehicles parked right outside.
Yeah, oh, on seventeen?
That's why I kind of finally figured out what it was, because I was somehow not paying attention and I knew that place and I thought that's what you guys were talking about and then I drove by and saw, actually, a couple Schooner Bay taxis.
There was nobody parked there today when I went by about nine o'clock.
Well, there are.
Just in front of the big garage, not in front of the house.
When is zoning board, when is ZBA meeting? Because that's, that's, they had to go, because that was just last week, so ZBA is this week.
They've got one coming up, the fifteenth, yes, two days from now.
I think that's, so that's what's going before ZBA and it should be pretty straightforward. I actually, given what I know about zoning and given that it's on Route Seventeen, it's kind of a glitch in our zoning. It may be something that the planning board may bring up to us that there's not any reason why you can't have a home occupation there, as far as the ZBA part. It would still need to go to planning board because of the change of use and such. But the, the planning board was kind of like, why do they have to go to the ZBA? And there are reasons why, because of zoning, but I think that might be something we wanna look at in the next year.
Yeah.
On the workshop list.
Mm-hmm, yep. Make a mental note to keep it for the workshop list. Any other?
Oh, what else, do I have anything else? We haven't met, we haven't met, Gar- garbage hasn't met, that's later on this month. I think that's it.
Yeah, the annual meeting of that is on the twenty-second, officers get elected. So.
Yeah.
And you didn't, you didn't go to those two, so, okay. Owen, did you, yeah, you went to a.
I did, I don't know if I was act, oh, I was acting as liaison and you were still.
We passed the torch.
Yep.
Pathways.
Great discussion, a lot of the discussion nearing the end was something Camden-specific and there was a question about why Camden's liaison does not frequent those meetings. So I went to the Camden liaison and I had a nice little chat with him and I believe he'll be there next week, or I'm sorry, the next, next meeting to work on some things. And I hope to keep the peace between high, high intensity personalities that will be in that room.
Be careful.
Good luck with that.
Hey, you know.
It's good.
Yep. I think he should be there. He's done a lot of work in this regard and I filled him in on a lot of the things that I'd picked up on that Joint Pathways was working on. And I think that, I hope that I impressed him enough into their dedication to, to bring him in and see what he can do. Push some other things for Leonard.
Oh, okay, interesting, yeah.
And, you know, the other part of the pathways meeting was that Maine Coast Heritage Trust was there, Oliver Farm, Ron Howard was there along with a couple of board members and they wanted to see how they could work together with the town and the pathways committee because they're gonna be developing some paths and trails on their properties and they wanted to know what the pathways priorities were and they're earlier in the process than the pathways committee is actually. So there's, I think there's some good synergy that's gonna happen with those, that organization and pathways, which would be good. And that reminds me, we budgeted some reserve money this year for pathways and we have, I think there's leftover money from the Union Street pathway sitting somewhere and I think we actually have to create a reserve account for pathways, because I don't think one exists, is that correct?
There's money that hasn't, hasn't been put.
Right.
But that money does sit there, you could reallocate it or move it.
Well, I think we probably oughta create the, if there isn't, create a pathways reserve, transfer that money in and then that way the money that we budgeted for pathways reserve in this year's budget can go in there as well so that we can be ready for grant opportunities that come along. Because one of the things that the pathways committee is wrapping up now is a new Rockport pathways master plan and that's gonna really focus on the Route Ninety area from West Street or from Route One all the way out. We've got Erickson Fields out there, we've got the two schools, we've got MRC and it's not gonna all happen at once, but we wanna be ready to, that's the only one, by the way.
Yep.
So getting that reserve, if we can get that on the agenda sometime in the couple of months, just so Ginny can give us the motion.
And I think that it would be quite useful with the potential new traffic light orientation at intersection of Route One and Ninety. If we had that money there, we could put that landing pad that's required for DOT to put, reorganize the, the pattern and put a walkway across or a.
Right, that, that traffic light is slated to be replaced, I think, in two thousand seventeen and when the DOT guy was at the pathways meeting, we asked him, you know, what was needed for, to get a pedestrian crossing there and he told us and, but we wanna be on that, so then Jamie's aware of that as well, Jamie was at that being. Jamie has been attending the pathways committee meetings when he can and it's been actually very helpful.
And on that landing pad, our, my understanding is anyway, this doesn't have to be a multiple hundred feet long, you don't have to get a threshold. If, if it meets to a ramp and there's a landing pad, that's all that we need to do.
Yep.
And they'll put a crosswalk in and we can, at our own pace, work on expanding that down Route Ninety.
Idea to go along with that traffic light, there's a turn lane coming off of southbound Route One now. There's the left turn lane with the signal, it was there because of the school buses and access to the RES. I've had a couple of complaints that, you know, why do we still have it there?
The left-hand turn?
Yeah, at least from southbound Route One.
Right.
But then there's also, I, I saw another near collision last week of somebody coming out of, off of West Street on the town side and somebody coming the other way and two people coming the other way and one of them going around and they, the two that are facing each other thinking they're both turning left and here's another one that he's coming right on through at about thirty-five miles an hour because that's the posted speed limit.
Yeah, we're not gonna solve the state.
Well, we, we've asked in the past, can they just mark the turn lanes? And, and designate that left lane as you're coming in on Route Ninety as a left turn lane so that the straight-through and right-turn lane is in the right lane.
Or they'll do what they did out on Seventeen and Ninety where they put the three-headed creature there and said it's just one lane.
Or if you're coming on Seventeen from Rockland and you're not allowed to turn right onto Route Ninety, according to the signage.
Oh, really? I haven't even, I'd never noticed.
Straight lane and there's a left lane.
Ah, you can't turn.
And the last thing before we leave this topic, I've been struck by how there's not a way for someone coming from Rockport heading to Rockland and you wanna, you're going to the hospital. You need to make a left-hand turn and you need to cross traffic. There's not a way to facilitate for people to make a left-hand turn unless there's no traffic coming. If traffic's coming the other direction, they're not allowed to turn. And that's fine, except I was projecting myself to an emergency situation where I needed to get into the hospital.
He has a baby coming.
I've got a baby coming, I've got a three-month pregnant wife. And it's just one of those things, I was, I mean, is that.
Yeah, there oughta be a delay on that light, so that if, whatever.
And I know it's, it's beyond what, it was just something that did strike me as I was sitting there waiting to go into the hospital and I had to wait and wait and wait and wait until traffic had finally cleared. Is acceptable, go around there?
My other liaison report is Cemetery, which was very brief, just a meeting last Friday and, and you read the memo from that. Basically, that was a result of that, setting the fee for the leaning and cleaning workshop. And we got a quorum together on short notice for that, so that was good. And, and the ORC basically was the moveback workshop.
Yep, and.
Yeah, we didn't talk, I guess we were all there, so.
I wanted to know why, that was a very informative meeting.
Yep.
My takeaway was somewhere coming down the pike, we're gonna be making a decision on that, is that?
Yeah, we have to make a decision to put it on the ballot.
Yeah, I was gonna have this on our August agenda.
Oh, yeah, we don't, yeah.
We would have to take the vote to put it on the November ballot if we want it on the November ballot.
Right. I would also, the, I guess, and before we do that, I would like to somehow find out if there's some downside to this because she was really rah-rah about it and she gave us a lot of great examples, so I don't disagree with anything she had to say, but there has to be more, there really.
The downside is really the cost.
Well, so the question is, is we need to sit down and figure out what that cost might be, but I also have to say, I feel like there must be some other reason why, other than we live in Maine and we wanna do whatever we darn well please.
Well, I mean, that's a lot of it in the small town, yeah.
And if, you know, and if that's all we hear when we ask that, that's fine, but I just, I kind of, I, it, it felt a little too positive and not that, what, I don't have any reason to question anything she showed us. She obviously showed us examples of very scary things that needed to be taken care of, but I, there's a part of me that just has, that feels like there must be some part of this story we haven't heard yet. And maybe it's just pissing and moaning and we just have to choose.
Yeah.
But I kind of feel like there, we need to at least ask for input of why we wouldn't do it. And maybe everything we'll hear will just be basic, I don't wanna fill out another piece of paper, I don't wanna have to, whatever. That's fine, then we have to make a decision with that knowledge. But I really felt like the whole room was just like, oh, we have to do this, it's the greatest thing since sliced bread. And I, I really have a hard time buying into things without taking the time to find out if there's negative stuff we've missed.
Yeah, a couple of people that were at the meeting that I would've expected to have had very negative comments came back with positive comments.
So, you know, and maybe.
I thought the builders might be, you know, a little negative on it, but they really weren't.
The builders that were there, though, are the ones that benefit from having everybody playing on the level field.
Well, that's true, they're, they're the qualified builders and they're the ones that are a lot, more liable to get undercut by somebody who might cut corners.
Right, and, you know, if the question is, is I wanna bid on something and, you know, not support your roof properly, but I can do it for half the price, then that's not a good argument. But I think it behooves us to ask if there are arguments that we need to hear.
Okay.
I'm just a couple of ladies knowing that it's going to the voters because I've been struggling with this and because I feel that one of the negative byproducts is lack of freedom. And I know that that's hard to quantify, but at the same time, and I brought it up in discussions at my household with people that had built a lot of stuff and I was getting conflicting views from my brothers and my father and everything, but one of the takeaways was, I feel like freedom is being taken away and that's, I know it's.
Well, it is, I mean, somebody's looking over your shoulder and saying, no, this roof isn't appropriate.
And it totally makes sense with commercial things. You're opening your door and you're allowing the general public to come in, you need to be held to a standard, into a code. But when it comes to a personal residence, that's where I really got into my own inner turmoil with it.
And if we do put it on the warrant, we will provide a recommendation and that would be the appropriate.
And we can adopt the building code and not the energy code.
Yes, that is correct.
We can't do it commercial, but residential.
Right, no.
It's all or none, yeah.
And so in some sense, it's, we don't have to figure it out, we just have to say yes or no.
But you can go to the Yert, I asked, I asked about Yert's tents and. Go to the yurt. I asked, I asked about yurts, tents and log cabins.
I did, um, go over and talk to John French about having another joint, uh, session. He is all in favor of that, you know, look at, you know, sharing, you know, resources. We do things, they do things, but we combine those efforts, um, not police and fire, no, that's not going to happen. But, you know, he's all in favor of that. He suggested that we have the town managers work out a date since the town managers all have our calendars. But looking at sometime.
You just filled it all up.
Looking at sometime, you know, late August or into September, um, but, you know, to move it ahead. I also informed him of our, our hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of being rid of Camden and he's all in favor of us, of.
Throwing snowballs at us?
Throwing snowballs and being present for, you know, the commemoration, whenever that is.
Are they going to have a hundred and twenty-fifth celebration of being finally rid of Rockport?
Well, that's why they stand on the other side of the arch and throw snowballs at us. Get away, get away, get away.
Have you ever noticed in the county commissioners' room in Knox County Courthouse, they have the dates wrong?
No.
Oh, really?
We've got the records, because we were considered the original town. They took the name, but we kept all the vital records. Yeah.
I didn't know that. I guess there's a reason behind it. I looked up at it one time, I was like, wait a minute, they got the dates wrong.
I do have an extensive list for the hundred and twenty-fifth.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yep, I've given mine to Rick already.
Okay, well, I'll type mine up.
Okay, um.
Are we done?
Are we done? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Second.
It's non-dbatable. All in favor? We're out of here. Thank you very much.
If you want to look at something, even though.